He doesn't have it.
Welcome, everyone, to the November twenty-second, two thousand and ten meeting of the Goffstown Board of Selectmen. Our first order of business is the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. We're going to skip over our acceptance of the minutes until Selectman Devanzo gets here. So we're going to go right into announcements. We have a couple of announcements. Our first one is from Kathy Schwinnard. And she writes, "Good morning, Carl. I wanted to send an email to let you know what a fantastic job the crew did paving Miles Avenue in Goffstown. It looks like a new neighborhood, and there was a great deal of detail that went into the landscaping on both sides of the road. Oftentimes, people take time to highlight negative experiences, so I wanted to make sure that I highlighted the positive. Have a great day." And that was again Kathy Schwinnard. Another one that we received was from the Daniel Webster Council. This is the Exploring Division. "Dear Chief Sullivan, on October twenty-second through the twenty-fourth, more than six hundred explorers from across the state of New Hampshire and New England participated in the annual University of Exploring held at the New Hampshire Fire Academy. The explorers participated in classes including Officer Survival, Basic and Advanced Firearms, and K-9 Handler. Thank you for allowing Officer Pinnard to take on the role of Assistant Director for the University of Exploring. Officer Pinnard puts in countless hours of time recruiting instructors, coordinating the use of the Concord Police Department range, and working on event details with the planning committee. His hard work in the months leading up to the University of Exploring helped to make the event a success. I've had the pleasure of working with Officer Pinnard for several years on topics ranging from the Goffstown Police Explorers to statewide exploring events. It's a privilege to work with a volunteer as dedicated to the Exploring program as Officer Pinnard. He has touched the lives of hundreds of explorers and has a profound impact on the future of law enforcement in New Hampshire. Thank you, Heidi Foissy, Senior Exploring Executive." And last but not least, we have the distinct privilege and honor to give an award, to announce an award, to Scott Bartlett. And so Scott, if you wouldn't mind coming up. To the front. Well, congratulations to you, Scott. You are the recipient of the two thousand and ten Lawton Chandler Award for outstanding contribution and involvement on behalf of municipal officials for being the Tax Assessor of the Year for the State of New Hampshire. So congratulations, and I guess... Did you bring your camera, Phil?
No, I did not.
This is a moment. Well, they get that moment. Well, congratulations to you, Scott. And I think that there's also a traveling...
Thank you.
Right, is there a traveling plaque?
Yes, that one right there. So where are you going to hang these, Scott?
Well, this one I'm going to hang in my office. That one, I'm not sure.
Congratulations, Scott.
I'm the fortieth recipient, and as you can see, I'm the last one that fits on this plaque.
So you get to keep it?
Our association, no. We need to decide what to do. So I will definitely have this until the...
Next year?
First of the year.
So this is kind of like the Stanley Cup of assessing?
Yes, it is.
All right.
For the male.
Do you want me to take it back?
Unless Mr. Gross wants to put it right behind them.
Have a nail, and we'll put it anywhere. Congratulations, Scott. All right, I'd like to go to the acceptance. We have a couple of minutes to approve. We have non-public meeting minutes of November eighth.
Yeah, public and non-public.
And on public and non-public, yeah. Is there a motion to accept those?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any corrections? Not hearing any. All those in favor, say aye.
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 It's unanimous. And then the next would be the acceptance of both public and non-public of November fifteenth. Is there a motion to... Selectman Capasano, is there a second?
Yes, seconded.
Selectman Pierce seconds. Any corrections? Not hearing any. All those in favor, say aye.
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 That's five zero. All right. Public comment, we're a little bit running ahead of schedule, but there's nobody here in the audience. The other announcement that I have is, on behalf of the board, just like to wish everyone a upcoming happy Thanksgiving. And Town Hall will be closed Thanksgiving and the day after Thanksgiving. And I'm not so sure, I think the transfer station is that, that is open on Saturday, on Friday, but not Saturday, I don't know. Check the website.
I think they just close on Thanksgiving Day.
Okay. Next up is we do have an acceptance of a check for five hundred dollars from the State Farm Insurance on behalf of Selectmen Fournier for the two hundred and fiftieth anniversary fund. So we would have to accept that.
Make a motion to accept it.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Selectman Capasano. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, five zero.
Does that mean he'll get to light a firework or something?
Yeah.
I guess not. Okay, moving right along.
Next is the Town Administrator's Report.
Just as a follow-up for the two hundred and fiftieth, somebody did email us today offering to do a fundraiser for any group that was looking for it. So I recommended that they...
Okay.
Contact the two hundred and fiftieth committee.
Yeah, there's a sign that, as we talked about about a month ago. Ken Richards from Lead Dog Builders put up that sign. I think he has another one, which is kind of like a thermometer. So we're looking to put that sign somewhere on town property, and then we'll just mark it as, as we go. So if there's any ideas on where we can put that, where we can update it period, like, you know, every couple of weeks, that would be a good idea. Also...
Yeah.
At front? Okay. There are volunteers that put canisters in different businesses too. So folks would like to contribute, set a dollar, dollar or two, whatever you can afford, that'd be great, and...
Is the thermometer freestanding, or does it have to be anchored in?
Ken will...
Have a sprinkler.
Ken is a carpenter, and he'll do whatever it needs to be done.
Maybe right next door, or right over here, in that little park area that doesn't have a radiation system.
Should be visible from the street, though.
Yeah.
It will be, yeah.
Don't we have a big sign to circle?
No, this one is a thermometer, that's just...
It can't be, I just wonder if it could catch.
What big sign in the circle? Oh, in the circle circle?
In roundabout?
Not the roundabout. We have the large sign that says two hundred and fifty.
Right, right.
I didn't know if you just wanted to attach it there, you could see, I mean...
He wants it available to update.
So you can update it more frequently. So in front of Town Hall would probably be a little bit easier.
Just don't nail it to...
Watch my sprinklers.
Don't nail it to the new columns.
That's true.
All right. Okay, so I'm sorry, Sue.
Okay. Weekly meeting schedule is in your package. It's a late week. EDC is tomorrow. That's about it. Consensus folder tonight includes AP warrants, event permits for Goffstown Main Street, tree lighting, a holiday festival on December third, and the Goffstown Christian Church Christmas Tree Sales on Henry Bridge. There's also right-to-inter for Hodge students at West Lawn Cemetery, section nineteen ninety-one, lot thirty-one, and My Lucas at Shirley Hill Cemetery, section two, lot twelve B. And also your annual right-of-way trail permission for the Young Canooda Mountain Snowmobile Club to take care of the trail that where it crosses over by Glen Lake, and he would like permission to use his ATV to do that trail work.
Is there a motion to accept the consensus holder? Is there a second? I won't discuss it if you'd like.
Second.
Second, the discussion.
The snowmobile permission didn't say where at all.
Yeah, it's over by Glen Lake, that corridor. And so they do their maintenance over there. That's it.
Going...
Isn't that what his note said?
So it's going further north from Glen Lake.
Yeah, and it's on the town property over by Glen Lake that he wanted to use the ATV. We'll make sure that it's not on the rail trail that he's using the ATV.
That's, you know, I'm trying to nail it down and put it in the records, please. Because it was nowhere on the...
Since then, we'll make sure it's not on the rail trail.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Five zero.
The assessor recommends Veterans Tax Credit from that three, lot fifty-nine thirty-eight, and Veterans Tax Credit effective four, one eleven, from that forty-one, lot seventy-three.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Five zero.
Thank you. DPW and Planning recommend recommendations to trash pickup and winter maintenance on Elva Drive is included in your packet at five A.
All right, last week, Joe Boachman was in, looking for winter maintenance agreement between the town and himself regarding Elva Drive. And I'm going to turn this over to Selectman Pierce to lead the discussion on it.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. The developer wants a waiver for the town to commence with trash pickup and winter plowing ahead of the normal acceptance of the road, which is probably to occur next year. And he also asked last week that if we did this waiver, that the, the sign at the head of the street be removed as it potentially is deterring buyers from houses in the development. I went up there today and, and looked at all the storm drains. The, up to probably two weeks ago, the storm drains stood proud of the temporary, the first layer of asphalt by inch and a half or two inches. And this was to be, probably so the final layer of asphalt to be put down next year would be flush with these storm drains. That, to me, is against normal engineering in that water for this fall and this winter, next spring, would be bypassing storm drains. When we mentioned the problem with storm, with plow trucks hitting these grates, his developer's solution was to put a ramp of asphalt around the storm drains so that the blade would ride up over the ramp and not clip the storm drain, potentially damaging the storm drain or the plow. In either case, in any event, the water is still going to go around the storm drain, now just around the ramp that's been built up to the edge of the storm drain. That, to me, is, is not a solution. Part of the waiver that we've been asked to sign in paragraph three, it says that the developer shall meet any requirements of the public works wished to impose in order to prepare the road for winter plowing, such as dropping the storm drains that currently extrude above the surface of the temporary roads or, or the first layer of asphalt. That, to me, is a, a critical development that should take place. And so I'm glad that it's in the statement that we potentially would sign.
All right, so the, the issue that we have before us is whether or not we want to proceed with a waiver of... Proceed, I'm sorry, proceed with the plowing, trash, and recycling provided as a municipal liability waiver as well as those conditions which would be lowering the, the grates so that they're flush with the surface of the roads they function. So those were four conditions that were set forth by Planning, which I did review. And is there a motion at all, or questions?
At a cost.
And there's a cost, right.
There's also a question based on the email that Sue received this morning from Mike Hillhouse that the grates are oriented incorrectly.
I haven't seen the email to that.
And that they would impede, they could possibly impede flow with snowbanks.
Water flowing down towards this grate is harder to go through the grate since the, the alignment of the holes is in parallel to the flow of water.
The openings are rectangular.
They'll put in wrong.
However, if...
They're perpendicular, so they're running parallel with the road.
If, if we were to tell the Director of Public Works to enforce the dropping of storm drains, then...
And correct orientation.
And as well as, when he's doing that, just put the covers on in the correct orientation.
Are they supposed to go the opposite direction?
Lengthwise, down, downhill. Is there a motion?
Do we, do we need to discuss, oh, okay. I'll, I'll make a motion that we do sign this winter maintenance agreement, providing a waiver.
With conditions?
With the condition that Public Works would see that the storm drains are lowered to the first layer of asphalt.
Incorrect the orientation, do both?
Yes, incorrect, thank you, incorrect the orientation of the grate.
Yeah, but also, I want to see the conditions that are on the memo from Brian Rose to the Town Administrator, because there are more. That's also a complete and sign away from municipal liability.
I think he did say that.
Just all these.
Yes.
All these.
All of those, in addition to the orientation.
And, okay, the dropping of...
I specifically wanted to talk about the, the grates, because in Mr. Rose's recommendation, it says such as. Well, I, I don't want it such as, I want it mandatory.
I, my comment was just going to be more in process, where if we, if we pass the motion as stated, it puts the pressure on DPW and/or Planning to negotiate with the developer to get it done. Whereas if we say, "Come back to us when this is done." DPW will provide us a report when all of these things are done. DPW can then say, "Board said no until it's fixed. Once it's fixed, I'll go back to the board," and that puts it on us as being the final people to say yes or no. It just takes that pressure off of them to be the ones to okay it.
Any other question? I had, you had the other concern regarding the signage that Town maintained the road. What does that mean if we, if we do this waiver? The sign's still maintained?
I don't think we have a, we don't have a right.
No, I understand, I didn't know.
That's a development reg.
I didn't, I just wanted to make sure if we take it.
And it turns, there's different legal opinions on that statute that I gave you last week on when, if they're grandfathered, because their subdivision was, the application was accepted as complete prior to us changing development regs, and their attorney says that probably is in effect. But that's not our issue, that is a Planning Board issue.
And I wasn't talking towards the grandfather, just talking to the idea, if we, if we make a waiver, what does that mean?
Right, but I, the other thing, well, it is an issue, because if we are one town and we're doing, I, I consider this...
But we did this prior to the change on the sign thing.
No, I, right, I understand that, but now we're going to go and embroil the Planning Board into an issue, whereas if, if this gentleman, if...
We don't have the authority to, to say nay or yea on the sign.
Well, you do have the authority, you do have the authority to say that they're not, that they're, that they're going to agree to leave it up.
No, we don't.
No.
We're not...
That's the Planning Board. That, that, we have no regulation of the sign. The Planning Board gave the Selectmen the authority in terms of...
But I don't want to, I don't want to, you know, li...
Entering into a development agreement to upkeep, provide winter maintenance and trash pickup. That's the only authority the Board, the Board of Selectmen has in the development regs.
Because the confusion, I think, a little bit for me anyway, if, if the sign is up, it's saying, hey, by the way, when you drive down here this winter, we're not sure what you should expect, the town is not maintaining the road. By the process given, the waiver was now saying this is a maintained road, and it's going to have, it's going to be sanded or salted or whatever needs to be done, and there should be, and there's a certain expectation. But yet that sign conflicts with that, and just that's why.
But, yes, and, yes, it, it does and it doesn't. If next year, for whatever reason, developer goes belly up and that road doesn't get a top coat, the following winter...
We're not providing it.
We're not providing if no one pays that winter maintenance fee. And then the homeowners are going to say, well, wait a minute, I bought the house, and I was never notified that there was no...
Well, while we're on the, was there a second on Selectman Pierce's motion? Because I just want to get it on the table before we... Is there a second? Okay.
And I had a question.
Yeah.
Well, it's also, just a clarification, if you go over there, two signs, and what the sign, one of the things that the sign says until, that those aren't going to happen until the road is, is accepted by the Board of Selectmen. So, I mean, that's why when Nick said it does and it doesn't, okay? The only concern that if the sign, you know, from, from what Steve is, what you're saying, suggesting, is that all of a sudden, if we have trash pickup and winter maintenance, people might think that, oh, well, the road has been accepted by the Board of Selectmen, which it really hasn't.
That, I would suggest that the secondary sign, instead of presently reading until the road has been accepted by the Selectmen, the developer could re, make that sign read, "The Board of Selectmen has granted a temporary allowance for trash pickup and winter maintenance."
Isn't the verbiage on that sign part of the reg?
Even the secondary sign?
Not the secondary, there's no allowance for secondary sign, there's just a, a national sign.
So the primary sign could stay up, the secondary sign could say there's a waiver.
Well, this question, whether that, and the Planning Board will decide whether that primary sign has to stay up, whether it goes by the date of application or the date of...
That sign also says something about school buses, too.
Yes, Steve.
No, I'm good.
My only concern is the costs, and I'd like to try to get some explanation as to how DPW arrived at the cost for trash and recycle pickup.
And also, I noticed his was based on up to September first. Do you want to go that long?
No.
Or do you want to have this done earlier than that?
Yeah, it was forty-one weeks, and I, I can't see why, does the road need time to acclimate or something?
I have a suggestion, and I think it's crucial.
Yeah.
Because what came up in the discussion about the no top coat?
Yeah.
There is, this, the second winter that it's going to be going in on the base coat. And one of the things that the Planning Board was concerned about when they discussed the, the bond reduction was that fact. So we may want to be able to tie this in, that this is not going to be carried over unless there's a top coat on it next year.
Well, this will expire.
But we, we have, we have no... But it won't be renewed unless there's a top coat.
We have no authority to tell the next board, next summer, to renew or not renew.
But I, I think it's incumbent upon us not to let that go through, because if it's going to go through a third winter on that base coat, that base coat's going to have to be redone before we accept it.
They would have to go through this waiver process every year.
Yes, this is going into the second winter, and that was an issue with the Planning Board.
They would have to go through this waiver process every year until that road is accepted. And there's no guarantee that next year we would extend a waiver.
Mr. Devanzo, are you suggesting the nine, the first of September date was, I thought that was eleven. The period for this agreement is, you know, from November through next September. Next September is too long?
Well, what I want to make sure is that we don't have somebody coming in here, okay? Four days before September first to renew this, and then you find out, that the board finds out at that point in time that the top coat never went on, or here we are, or now the board looks like the bad guys.
Yes.
Could we add something that says this is not subject to automatic renewal? Or something that this, this is, you know, some, some verbiage that basically says what you're, you're saying, that it is not an automatic...
I would just reference a top coat, not, not subject to automatically, without, without the top coat. Or something to that, to, something to trigger that, to say, hey, there's a reason why we're not going to go forward, because you didn't put the top coat on it. If the top coat's on, it's fine.
Those are the issues besides the top coat.
Well, state the date that you want the top coat down by then.
End of July.
Yes.
Is there bond callable by that time? They were doing a reduction letter credit?
The Planning Board, there's so much discussion on it, I honestly don't...
I guess if next winter, or say next September or October, the developer comes in and says, "I'm not, I haven't been able to get the top coat down. I understand that next year I'm going to have to redo the base coat before you accept the road, but I'd like to have a winter waiver, and I'll pay for services this winter." Would we say yes or no? And I know we can't predict exactly, but, you know, in other words, if he accepted, acknowledged that, what he has to do to get the road, and I guess where I'm going with that is, do we want to say now that he's definitely not going to get a renewal next year?
Subject to...
It would be subject to a complete review.
Yeah, once again. Okay. Is, does anyone other than myself want an explanation on the costs? As if not, then I'm, then there's no sense in doing it. You want it?
And, and I guess that was also the second reason why, I'd like to see all of these issues resolved first before we say yes conditionally based on this.
So we'll put it off.
The Planning Board did vote to reduce the bond letter credit...
Seventy thousand.
To seventy-seven, two ninety-one, from one fifty, two seven nine. They put a condition on this approval to release funds that the road had to be finished and accepted by the Selectmen by September first, two thousand and eleven, or the town would take action to call the bond from, bond money from the bank.
There you go.
Okay, so that was the reason for the first September?
Yeah.
Okay, so just to summarize, we have a motion and a second, and that is to proceed with the, the, the plowing and the garbage and recycling on the road, provided that those four provisions are met, in addition to that, the orientation of the storm, of the storm drain as well as the lowering it. Okay?
And then we have to establish a fee.
And then it's the establishment of the fee.
So you want to have more discussion.
How is this expressed to the developer? Does Mr. Rose write him a letter, or does...
No, oh, it would be done in a municipal waiver of liability form, that I think a copy of one is in your signature folder, right?
Yes.
Did Brian put one in there?
Yeah. So we're voting to approve the...
And there'll be a cover letter with it.
We haven't really, I don't think we can take action, because we don't have the money piece, the cost piece.
I, I don't think you can prove it until you get the, right, the fees established.
So what's the motion?
Well, there was a motion to proceed with all of those four bullet points.
It says here for paragraph two, "The dollar amount shall be determined by Public Works." And we have before us a draft of what that dollar amount would be.
Just doesn't make, some of it doesn't make sense to me, so...
And have clarification on the dollar amount and how it was calculated?
Right, that's right, that's what I'm looking for.
Have that presented to us next Monday?
So do you want to withdraw your motion right now?
Yeah, let's withdraw it, let's, we can tackle everything next Monday.
I will withdraw the primary motion.
But, but I do think that we can proceed with, you know, getting this thing drafted, because that's not going to change, and then you can just insert the dollar amount, so that this way...
The only outstanding issue is the dollar amount.
Correct, and this way, the board can hopefully take action Monday night and then be ready to deal with it Tuesday.
Okay.
We'd want all these items corrected by next Monday?
Oh, in terms of the, what they...
Well, you'd want to get them to get going, because it's going to require paving, the paving plans are closing.
That's what, another, what I was asking for is that, let them fix all of this. Public Works says everything is okay, then we approve the, the waiver.
I'm good with that.
The only question is, if we approve the waiver, then is the, the fee structure with it, are we going to just, are we going to have discussion on the fee structure, or...
Next week.
Next week.
So you want to wait till after, I mean, also...
No, they're going to, we're going, Sue is going to advise the developer now, saying, you, you got to address all these things. When you're done, you come back to us. In the meantime, we're going to solidify...
Because there's no sense having that discussion till, you know, in other words, if, if, if it can't meet those specifications, there's no sense having a conversation on fee structures, I'm trying to get at.
If the storm drains were changed very quickly, this, this paragraph three that is in Mr. Rose's recommendation just could be dropped out completely, not even mentioned.
Right. Okay.
All right, we're good.
Be more of a clean decision next Monday.
All right. Next is approval of bid specs for the pools. Parks and Rec Director submits the enclosed bid specs for our approval. Sue, can you just give us a little bit of insight into RSA four, four, seven, colon, sixteen? As, as in terms of performance bonds?
Yes, performance bonds are required on public works projects over thirty-five thousand dollars by state law. And it, the RSA reads buildings and bridges and roads, but it doesn't say pools. So I had a call up to legal at LGC and have not received a response yet. They were quite busy last week with their conference, so I'm sure they roll out. What is the RSA again, please? Four forty-seven, colon, sixteen. Four forty-seven, colon, sixteen. If it said facilities, then it would definitely be included, but it didn't use the word facilities.
Is there any more to this bid specification and... Is there any more to this bid specification in these pages we're looking at? Yeah, this is rather bare, minimal.
One of the conversations that comes up during the pools is that methodology of how one company would do it versus another company's. And I think there's been questions arising a little bit that we had received an earlier number when we decided to transfer the eighty thousand from the, from the extent, extension of the road to going towards the pools. Since then, I think, see, my understanding is that they've met with several people and they've looked at and they've had, they've come across with different ways of handling the, the, the projects with these pools. So I think what we're seeing now was probably more of a vagueness in, not a vagueness, but we're seeing more of a when you look at these bids, you're looking more at what's going to come through with your ideas. In other words, people are going to look at and they're going to give a totally, you know, I, I expect you're going to see different formats. It's not like purchasing a truck, where you're going to say, I want an F two fifty with such size engine, et cetera. I think you're going to see different bids or different styles of how to tell, how to correct the situations with the pool.
Then it should be a request proposal.
I'm saying, that's what I'm expecting. I'm, I'm not, I'm just saying, I'm reading this, I'm just, I'm not sure what the intent is.
I'm jumping on the sword on this one. I, I'm not in favor of this because I, I think we made a last, I wouldn't say last minute, but last month, we decided that we thought we were going to do something good in terms of the budget. And this is a, something new for our director, and I'd hate to see it not go right, because we tried to rush something. And I, I just feel this is getting rushed. And if we want to do it right, I don't think we should try to rush this. Because really, the scramble here is to try to get RF, you know, to get a request done so that we can get a contract signed and encumber monies so it can be done next spring. I just got, I have a lot of concerns that we don't, we haven't really thought all this stuff out as completely as we should, and, and it makes me a little bit hesitant.
Along that lines, there's nothing in this description that says we would, we want the work done by a certain date so that the pools can open.
And then typically, I mean, I, I used to work for a pool company.
The amount that they're bidding has to be, has to acknowledge that the physical work is-
You say, when you say wet blast, the old paint, loose plaster off the bottom of the pool. Well, when you do these types of things, you're not just doing the bottom of the pool. You're also worried about the side walls, and there's a lot of things that you're worried about. And again, and I don't even know if wet blasting is the preferred method, and it's just something that-
This was very specific in terms of how the repair.
Right, which is not always-
Didn't leave the option open, in my opinion, for, what was the budget committee member saying?
Right, fiberglass shell.
Right, that would be something different. That would be a whole different methodology. And so would they even respond to this if they were a fiberglass company?
Did anyone help Rick with this, or did, or, or did he speak with anyone regarding how this bid or request should look?
No, I got it when he was posting it on the website.
What'd you see is what we got?
And I think that's part of it, but, Nick?
Well, that's where I was going. I was going to suggest, if he hasn't, that maybe he contacts some other local municipalities, Bedford, Manchester, Hooksett, communities that have pools that may have at some point resurfaced them, and see if they could borrow, there are fees.
There are.
Because the other-
Or whatever they have.
Because I'm going with Nick, because it, there's, I expect you're going to have different, people are going to have different ideas how to, how to, how to do these pools. The second, and, and for, for a Parks and Rec Director to look at a pool, not being suspicious, I mean, we know they need work, to say, here's how it's going to be done, I'm not quite exactly sure how you come about with that. The second piece with that, as far as scrapping it, then what you're saying is you're scrapping a pool for next year, at least one, and we're not sure what's going to happen with the second.
We're at risk of not encumbering.
I mean, yeah, no, I, I, and I say yes and no, because-
Well, you can't, that, that pool-
Can you hear me out?
Well, I'd like to finish.
Okay, because you made a comment, and it's not, I don't think it's accurate.
Well, I'm going to say, at this point in time, part of some of the structures of things before we go too far is within Parks and Rec, especially when we have the summer programs, they're going to a fee base on that, and it's going to be difficult to have. And, and part of the, big reliance on these programs is that they have a pool available to them. And so if we decide to say, hey, we'll take, we'll, we'll, we'll address this next year, one, we have to find the funds, if we're going to find the funds. Two, you're, you're starting the process late, and these, these, this will not be ready for that time. So you're not only foregoing the idea of, hey, we'll just, we'll hold the pool, you're also foregoing revenues within Parks and Recs. I just want to make sure we understand it as we go forward with the discussion.
Okay, I'm going to use chairman privilege. I don't necessarily agree with you in the sense that could this be repaired in the months of April, May, and even the first couple of weeks of June? Yes, because typically the pool, you, you could say that the pools aren't going to be open until after, you know, mid-June. So I, I think it is very plausible to do these types of repairs in the spring. That's one. Secondly, I, I don't necessarily think that having, you know, one pool closed down is going to significantly impact revenues. I don't think it is a horrible thing, should it happen. It's not a great thing, but it's not horrible. There are many municipalities bigger in size than ours that only have one pool. So is it an inconvenience? Yes, it's an inconvenience, but if we're going to be spending upwards of, say, eighty thousand dollars, I would want to make sure that we're doing it right, and, and I'm just, I'm just not confident that it's, it's kind of, it's on the right track, shall we say. Nick?
I think this conversation may be premature. We have a request for bid before us. We don't have to approve this. What we can do is direct the Parks and Rec Director to seek some outside assistance, come back to the board with a request for proposal that's more detailed, and then we can approve it or not approve it. We have till the end of the year to make that decision whether to-
We really don't, because we have to encumber funds if we're going to do this.
So you have to award a bid.
We have to award a bid by December thirty-first.
End of the year.
I understand that, but at this point, we still have time to do that. And if we don't like any propos, any format that comes to us, we, at that time, we can say no. But if he can get us something, maybe he'll work with Parks and Rec, who have very good experience in putting requests for proposals together.
Which Parks and Rec?
I'm sorry, Public Works.
Okay.
You know, just their expertise. And then they come back to us in a week or two weeks with something we accept. There may be time to get it out there, subject to our approval.
I have David and I have Phil.
If we were to approve this tonight, this proposal asks for the bids to be received by the fifteenth of December. So if this decision is delayed for one week, while it's-
That's my point.
Made better. Well, it's the twenty-second, I know.
And it's Thanksgiving. And I'm just being, I'm being-
You want to give the vendors an opportunity to come and probably have a, a meeting at the pool, so they can actually see what they're bidding on?
Right, and what happens if it's, if there's snow in that pool, but, in, in two weeks? I mean, it's very possible. Yes, Phil?
Well, I guess the question though that I have is, how do we know that the Parks and Rec Director did not already go through this exercise with pool companies and come up with this as the way to repair these pools?
I think Steve can address that, because I mean, I happened to get, catch, I attended the tail end of the Parks and Rec meeting, and you were there the whole time. He did address that.
He did address it in regards that we've had several people giving different ideas, and I guess the best way for me to formulate it would be if one was, like I say, if you're purchasing a vehicle and you say, hey, I want a specific vehicle, year, model, engine, transmission, it's very, you, you can get very detailed in what you want that bid to look like. When it comes to the pools here, I think you're going to have a variety of people giving different comments, because it, it, there was this range of what people said, hey, would you, you know, in other words, how they would do the repair, and how much of it costs, and what the extent, and how much, where you go. And because you're dealing with, you're not dealing with a specific regarding that, it's not like saying, I want to replace it, like you, like say, we're doing a grassmation tunnel, you want to replace the door. People are going to, people are trying to foresee what they think it's going to be when you start grinding it, taking it down, or whatever they, exactly they do, but, and what materials you use to put it back. It's, it's, it's not as finite, I think, looking at a pool to say that, versus replacing a door or buying a truck.
Well, my question still hasn't been answered.
He did meet with a couple pool people.
Yes, he did.
And they did see the pool.
There's different ideas of it.
Different ideas.
Different ideas, right, each of them.
Right, but, but the point that I'm trying to get to is, these pe, these pools are a specific type of pool made in a certain period of time, and they're all kind of standard. Everybody kind in, in the pool business kind of knows how these pools were built, what material, probably they know the thickness of, the anticipated thickness of the walls and everything like that. They probably, if you're in the pool business, you probably know these, because you've probably seen the specs, you've worked on these before. And I guess my question is, how do we know that he didn't contact three different pool companies, go through different scenarios with them, but all conclude from the main thing, from the three, the people that he met, that this is what needs to be done for the pool? Now, they might use different materials, they might use different caulking, they might use a different process over here. And I think that that would come out in here, because you would say the material that you, that you're going to be used to do this repairs with.
You want to respond to it?
I, I would say we're not that deep into this process.
I don't think so either.
I mean, there was a lot of conversation, and I think there's just been some, some views, some generalized opinions, but there's been nothing very specific as to how to go about it.
I guess I just don't understand.
We are at that stage now where the expectation would be for someone to go there and give some very detailed as to what they need done.
I just want to offer a possible solution here.
That's where I was going.
Okay. Well, well, I'll do mine, and then you can do yours. In Rick's budget presentation, and I don't have that in front of me, but I could have sworn that there were a lot of things in that budget presentation. One, we know that we have lifeguard stands that are outdated. They don't, they don't even use them anymore. That's a safety issue, and that's something that we could take care of. We can purchase those things. We know that we have a diving board that is also poor. We know that he had to replace pumps, if I'm not, and filters, if I'm not mistaken.
Was he doing some of that this year?
That was part of next year's budget.
Next year's budget.
But did you order any of those this year?
Not that I'm aware of.
It's, it's based upon next year's budget, so.
Next year's budget. So my point is that maybe those are the types of things that we take care of in this year's budgets, that their monies will be available for next year to, to, you know, to, to fix the pool. So there's those things you could buy, and you, you could, you can buy them, you could, you know, there's no, no problem with that.
Don't have to explain to me why I would want a diving board and lifeguard chairs, et cetera, and then no pool.
Because you're going to have the pool. You're, all you're doing is you're simply buying some additional time to get it done.
In anticipation of it.
In anticipation of it.
I think that there's a difference in the value of these chairs and the repairs to the pool.
Well, not, but not the filters and not the pumps, because those are very expensive items. And I'm not saying they're going to, they're going to add up, but I think, I bet you in totality, they'll add up to at least one of those pools getting fixed.
No.
Hold on, I have Sue.
Thank you. I hear what Selectman Fordyce is saying, that he'd like these pools both to open in June, when school gets out. And I hear your concern, that you don't want to rush this. This is a big enough project. You want it done right, and you want more detail in the RFP, if it is going to be an RFP. The other way to do that, because quite frankly, I don't think that's going to get done by year end, why don't you do a vote from surplus for this?
No, I didn't hear you. A vote from surplus.
On the warrant. Giving yourself more time, so he can have the beginning of the year to get the information he needs to write a detailed RFP. Go out, get your bids, and when it passes town meeting, you go out for bid, it's all ready. But then if it doesn't pass, it all means no.
Then you, then no means no. That's the problem.
That's the problem with that.
Yeah.
Where this has the town reserves the right to accept or reject any and all bids, does it hurt to put it out and see what comes back?
I would just want to get the answer on the performance bond. That was my major concern, because that is a cost to someone they're bidding. And they should know it's going to require a performance bond.
I-
But from what I'm hearing, a repair of the pools isn't going to come with any kind of warranty from the people he's talked to. There's no warranty with it.
And as, as Selectman Pierce said, there's nothing like, when will this be completed by? Oh, yeah, we'll get it done in August fifteenth.
Completion date and performance bond are the big ones that would-
I'm not opposed to that, Nick. I, as I think, in the worst scenario, if we don't like anything, we just reject them all.
They're all too vague, and we don't-
Can't hurt us. Because I don't think we're going to get it done. I don't, I don't think any other scenario will be better. And then we can at least take our chances in two or three weeks.
We're, hopefully there'll be enough technical information in the response as to the type of materials being used for these four processes.
And I think that's where it's going, that you, that's when you're going to hear it. I don't think anyone could give you that technical, you know, Rick couldn't, no one could give you, hey, here's what's going to be done without having to meet with these people.
Some places hire a consultant to do that, and Nick offered that maybe another municipality has already done that piece.
The-
Let's try it.
Yeah.
So deadline would be, what do you want to build in for a deadline? Are there any penalties if they don't have it done by the deadline? Sorry. But I knew you were going to go there sometime.
Good point, Sue.
Knows how to. Deadline, what, June fifteenth? June one? What do you want to do? June one? Give yourself, let's go June one, give yourself a little buffer.
Yeah, you go June fifteenth, you're not going to have a buffer.
Completion by June one. And, which is, please provide an individual cost per pool. How about, how about please provide your repair methodology?
I, we, we need an anonymized, detailed break.
Well, that's what I'm talking about, right.
Maybe we just use those, those, those words.
All right.
And I'll probably hear back tomorrow from, on the performance bond.
Take care of those couple of typos in there too, seams.
So he, no one, this didn't come across to you till now?
This, this came in Friday, I believe.
Okay, so-
It was going out in mail. I said, no, not yet.
Would you mind making the motion, Nick, and then we'll, I don't think we have a motion on the table, so.
We, we did have a motion.
To proceed?
Did we? Catherine? I don't think we did.
Okay.
Need a motion then to proceed with the, what do we call them, this?
Proposal.
Request for proposal or something?
You want to change it to proposal?
Yeah.
It says to seek a-
It says proposal.
Seek a proposal to repair, yeah.
Because he did change that. It did say bid originally.
Motion to proceed with the-
RFP.
RFP for pool repairs per the changes requested by the board.
Second.
Okay, the only thing, only thing I'd also like to see is, as we do this, anything that will help a contractor, i.e. photographs of that pool, they can be posted somewhere or provided to them.
Yeah, he has those, yeah.
All right, all those in favor of that motion, say aye.
Aye.
Next is discussion of separate and special articles in for the two thousand eleven town meeting. One I did forget to put in there was Main Street.
Mm-hmm. Twelve, Main Street.
Got some Main Street program for fifteen thousand. And the one that I'd like to delete is number ten, because that's a residence tax, and I think there was a misunderstanding that it may be a property tax thing. And we haven't done the resident tax in town for many, many years, the head tax.
Head and poll tax.
Head and poll tax, there you go.
Okay, so let's go, go through these. The first, police, dispatch and clerks, fire, and DPW collective bargain agreements are all in negotiations. We had, we talked about the non-union cost of living. Then we did the revolving fund for special detail. That was number six. Do you want to discuss these individually, or as we come up? We'll start with that one. Revolving fund for special detail. Had some discussions with the chief of police, and my question here is that I've heard different selectmen, or somebody say, well, is that a police only, or is that emergency services? Because there are some details for the fire department and ambulance, et cetera. Like there are special events at St. Hayes where they have to have ambulance details. So what is the, who wants to talk to it, speak to it first, Nick?
That was one of the questions I had raised, was it going to be just police or police and fire? But during the budget hearings, one of the things I heard was that it's a good, good thing to have, but it's not the right time. We don't have the financial software in place to be able to track that.
That was, that was, Janice had said that it was, it, that there was, there might be some issues with regard to the fund accounting part of it, I think.
Right, and I, I think with, so personally, I think, good idea, but let's wait until we have all the software and things in place to allow that to go on without adding more work on a staff that is already shorthanded, trying to do more with less.
I think one of the concerns that might be out there, quite honestly, is that next year or, or the following year after that, we're going to have presidential primaries once again. And that's something that always screws up the police department, if I'm not mistaken. So it's that once every four-year deal where it's hard to manage that budget, and when you have tight budgets, and all of a sudden, you've got, you're over by twenty-five or fifty thousand dollars on all these special details, and you got to find it somewhere else within your budget.
You budget more that year.
You budget more.
And you budget more revenue.
I mean, typically, we haven't had an issue with the revenue- I mean, typically, we haven't had an issue with the revenue not matching the projections, they've typically come in a little bit more.
Right.
That gives us an extra year to investigate, I think next year, one of the things on our plate is to focus on that finance software. So, the following year, it may be in place.
Well, what is, I mean, what is the hiccup with the, with the software, I, that's what I'm curious.
The cost.
No, no, not that, no, what, with our current software.
Oh, with our current software?
Right.
It's very limited, very limited.
Meaning.
You can't, you can't set up a separate fund and do payroll out of it. So now you have to do a transfer, so that means budgeting.
I was gonna just say that.
QuickBooks.
QuickBooks Pro, you could do it.
Yeah, I don't get that, I just, I'm serious.
You know, it all ties into the W fours, and if you're doing something offline, it's not gonna all tie in.
Well, wait a minute, you do W. Why can't you do W fours with QuickBooks?
Well, it's, you're gonna have some in one system and some in another system? I've been looking at other towns and how they're doing it, and some are doing a transfer without even budgeting for a transfer. So, there's no ideal, cause no one's happy with their financial software. Every piece of municipal finance software has its limitations.
And I, I guess, I'm not trying to be, to push the envelope here, but like, is it really, really a problem? Or is it just, I mean, can be, I, I, I don't know, I, I, that's where I'm at with it, I don't.
But I, I would ask the same question as to.
Is it, is it current problem?
Current system, is it really a problem? It, it really isn't. We budget a hundred and ninety thousand dollars for an ambulance, but we tell the budget committee that it's offset by revenue. So, that's kind of, it goes by. So, I think during our budget process, when someone looks and sees a hundred thousand dollars for details in the budget to pay out, if they know that there's offsetting revenue of equal or more, no one looks at that. So, I, I guess I'm just, you know, if it's not broke, why are we?
It's a wash.
Adding more work.
Anyone else wanna be heard on this? All right, this, but let's do a straw vote here, um, how many of, of us are, want to consider this revolving fund for special details? Have a strong urge to do this thing? Anyone?
I'd, I'd like to, I'd like to see about getting it, it, it done.
I would too, anyone else? All right.
A, a discussion point, please. If the revolving account is set up, you're saying it's, it's not impossible to put a copy amount of monies into our correct system for payroll. It's not impossible, but it's difficult.
You, you still have, to do it correctly, you need to still budget. Because if you're gonna transfer from one fund to another, you still have to budget, it's gross appropriation. So, it's basically what we're doing now, except it's putting it aside in a separate fund. But you're still gonna have to budget for it.
For only for a couple of years, and then there's enough money in that fund so that you won't be putting it, your budget will be.
As long as you pay payroll out of the general fund, you have to budget for that. You'll take the revenue from the revolving fund to offset it, but you, and the leftover would stay in the revolving.
Also, you're doing, you're doing fund transfers back and forth.
So, you still have to budget for it.
Yeah.
And, and again, as, as small as it may be, or as large as it may get after time, that money should be in the general fund. If there's balances left over, that revenue should be revenue.
But didn't the chief tell us that that could not happen? That the money has to be used for, um, things compatible to special details?
If it's in a revolving.
If it's in a revolving.
If it's in a revolving fund.
Right now, it just stays in the general fund. So, if there's ten thousand dollars left in a year, it just, it goes to offset taxes in the general fund right now.
So, my question would be, would we reduce the police budget by that ten thousand? Each year, if they're going to use ten thousand in revolving fund fees? Cause in essence, they have a second revenue source, or, or.
And it's done differently in every town that set this up. The town of Bow, for example, will only put money into the revolving fund to offset wages, that's it. They don't let a surplus build up in there.
Won't, or you can't?
They don't, they chose not to.
Okay, are there accounting, so, is there a new financial software, or that, that does allow for this, that would accept it?
That's what we would be looking for.
All right.
I'm, uh, it appears to me that we're rushing into this decision without understanding the process to how it's gonna be accomplished. And, uh, that needs to, to me, I'd like to have all that described. And unfortunately, if it's too late to do it, by the time we formulate a budget, then it's too late.
All right, Mike.
We don't have to make a decision on this tonight.
We don't have to, but I think it's something that at some point, we have to make these decisions. So, unless we can get an answer within the next month.
Keep it on the table.
Okay.
It can stay on the table, but, um, I mean, I, from what I'm hearing, maybe, maybe this year's not the right year, from what everybody keeps saying, maybe it's, maybe it's more appropriate for next year, when we have the software that can handle it, or the year after. I mean, it all boils down to, if we're gonna spend, you know, another hundred man-hours to make this thing work with our, with our, I mean, that's kinda what I wanna know, how many man-hours is it gonna take to, to do this? Um, and if it's a significant amount of man-hours, then it doesn't offset the benefits of, of why you'd wanna have these, these funds in the first place.
Okay.
Uh, going on to seven, enforcement of local ordinances, uh, thirty-one, thirty-nine C. Um, we've talked about that before, that would give us a little bit more of a tool in our belt with regard to, um, addressing folks who violate, uh, different ordinances. And I, it sounds.
This is that ticket type of.
This is the, the way that we, the code enforcement or the police can issue tickets.
If the tickets aren't paid, then you have to take them to court, which you can do now anyway, take them to court. But, um, the ticket may avoid court, maybe someone will just pay that ticket.
Because when you, when you go, when you go to court, if I'm not mistaken, the, there's a couple of things that can happen, right? We could, we could, not only could we ask for the payment of the fine, but could we also ask for court time or other fees associated with that, I'm not, I'm not sure, but.
No, I think it's a fine, straight fine.
Straight fine, okay. Now, if someone, I'm assuming that this would be the same thing as any other types of, like, uh, motor vehicle violations. If someone gets multiple tickets for, um, a violation of an ordinance, I would assume that you can do like a bench warrant or something like that? Do you get a warrant?
I have attorney Drescher writing this article for you, um, and the process. He, he's not totally convinced that this is, um, that this statute has enough teeth.
Yeah, well, it has more teeth than what we have, have though.
No, you go to court, you can go right to court now.
Are you talking the amount of the fines, is that what you're saying?
He's, well, he's likening it to the house ordinances, where the house ordinance, you know, if someone doesn't pay their fine, you can just put a lien on the house and not go through the court process. And he would've liked to see something like that in this statute. So, you place a lien on the house, rather than having to go through the cost of going to court. But that's not how the legislation was written.
But if you do go to court and you get a judgment, which is what will happen, the judge will give you, if, if, if the person doesn't show up, a judgment will be entered, um, against that individual, that judgment then goes on, goes to the clerk. And then when they ever wanna sell or do anything with real property, there's a judgment, and then they have to pay the town. And then I, is, and I don't know what mechanism there is for interest, so I, I think it, this is a lot better than what we currently have. And that's the roller coaster ride of sending letters, Derek sending letters, and people obeying the law, then disobeying the law, obeying the law and disobeying the law. And I think it gives us the, the ability to, you know, to give them a citation. It might even give us the ability, depending on how we write it, where we could, you know, if they pay it by a certain, where they can, it can be forgiven if it's some, it's different.
Can I explain to attorney Drescher, he, cause he was saying, so if someone doesn't, didn't get a building permit, and your building code enforcement officer just leaves him a ticket? And I said, no, I think we wanna give people a chance, saying, hey, we don't have a recorded building permit here. So, he's gonna write it that way.
Gives you a leeway.
Right.
Right. But I think what we're trying to address here are these, that we have quite a few instances where there are clear violations, they're repeated. We are con, spending a lot of time contacting individuals, they comply, and then, three months later, they're back at it again. We said, and then it's just a, it's a roller coaster ride, we're trying to prevent that.
And, and he'll give you, your, his opinion to you, and I'm just paraphrasing, but he says, so, you end up going to court, you end up getting, okay, yep, they have to pay a fine, and they don't pay it with the teeth.
But then you have a judgment, you have a judgment, that's the teeth.
You wanna lock the person up?
No, 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 you have a judgment against them. So, now when they wanna sell something at some point in time, they have to pay the piper first.
But where's that recorded?
What?
There's no lien, there's no lien process, that's what he's saying.
Oh, that's what he's saying?
Yeah, that's what he's saying, it should've been written with a lien process, so you could actually lien the parcel.
Okay, we'll take a look at that, I.
Well, is he writing the ordinance in that fashion?
No, he can't, there's legislation wasn't passed in that fashion. That's what he's saying, it doesn't have enough teeth.
Work within the scope of the present legislation.
Better than nothing.
Then I think, well, I would say go forward.
I'm, I still like to go forward.
I did send out a, um, request on my listserv to see if any other town has invoked this and adopted it. No one has responded that they've done it yet.
I.
I heard Franklin was working on it.
Didn't, didn't you just say Drescher was doing something similar in his firm for another community?
No, um, the labor attorney, our labor attorney is doing it, uh, working with a planner up in the city of Franklin.
Okay, next one was the community revitalization tax relief incentive, we've heard a presentation on that one. I thought that the board, the consensus of the board was to proceed, but we wanted to, uh, get a draft of that one article as well.
And we want a clarification, if you had to name, um, areas, if you didn't name areas, what would the default be?
Right, master plan or other things, right. Okay, um, next was a rail trail match for grant. And David, I think that was yours.
In a nutshell, there, uh, the rail trail development committee for the town has endorsed a project, uh, that we would seek funds for under a state grant, um, two thousand eleven state grant, recreational trails program. And the project area is from Danus Park Road east to Lynchville Park Road. The issue there is to remove the, a handicapped accessible, uh, barrier at Morgan Circle. And.
You're talking that point where it goes, boom?
Yes, it drops a ten-foot, ten-foot high embankment. It needs a proper ramp put in to ease the slope. I need some guidance from this board as to how we should formulate the, uh, application that would be brought to the board, uh, in the first part of January for your review and approval. Uh, one option is business as usual, where we seek a grant to, um, to hire, and, and use that money from the grant to hire a contractor. I've itemized, following a methodology that the town engineer would use, I've itemized what the cost of that contract would be. You've seen me out there, a few of you have seen me out there doing a survey, so I would understand how the drainage would work, how the culverts would have to be put in. I itemized that as it would be a fifty-two thousand dollar contract. That means thirty thousand dollars from a state grant, which is the maximum. And the town would have to contribute another twenty-two thousand dollars towards this project. Uh, the issue is how would we raise twenty-two thousand dollars? This limit, you know, some could be privately raised, uh, could be town articles, we've exhausted the park impact fund. But, so the question is, how do we raise the additional funds to pay contract? The other concept is that we have the project done by Public Works. And under that concept, it, the funds from the state grant would buy the materials that Public Works would use. I estimate those materials at twenty-five thousand dollars. The, uh, labor of DPW and the value of their equipment hours would fully cover the twenty percent match. And, and so, in, under that scenario, there's no need for additional cash to go against, uh, completing the project. So, I'm seeking, um, nod of approval here, how should I proceed with the application? Would you like to see it as a commercial contract? In which case, I would need an extra twenty-two thousand dollars on top of the grant. Well, would you allow Public Works to do this? Carl has told me that it's, he would be favorable towards this approach if it could be done in, after the normal road season.
With what, December?
Late fall, and as whatever the weather allows.
I'm just using our current road construction.
Yeah.
Sorry.
I'm just, uh, open for discussion of if, how. I, I personally prefer having DPW, um, do this work. They're fully capable of building any road that we want in town, they would be fully capable of putting down nit pack and drainage for a sixteen-hundred-foot-long section of the trail.
Nick.
Sloughman, if, what's the timeline on the grant? If we were to put a grant proposal in, when would we be notified, and what's the performance period?
The grant is due third week in January to an office in Concord. They make their announcements of the, uh, people receiving the grants in late April, early May. The money is released, uh, you know, first of June, and it's good until the following June, you know, thirty June. Yes.
Can you request extensions?
Yes, and we have done that, uh, with a two thousand nine grant, uh, for a project that's underway this week. We, due to many easement issues and design issues, we had to, uh, uh, seek a one-year extension for the two thousand nine grant. So, it's, it can be done.
My last question would, would, um, would changing that to asking, going to your option of using DPW, but they do it at their ability? In other words, we don't say by the end of next year, if they don't get it done by next year, they move it into the two thousand and twelve year?
They have until June of two thousand.
Twelve.
Twelve.
Twelve, to accomplish it and ask for reimbursement up until thirty June. If, if they were, could not fit it into their schedule, uh, it'd be non-impact with some higher priority items. Yeah, we could, we could ask the state for a one-year extension.
Technically, we would have until the spring, if we, if they gave us that extension, spring of two thousand and thirteen.
Technically, if you get a one-year extension.
So, we could have three construction seasons.
I, uh, I anticipate that this could be anywhere from an eight-day project to a twelve-day project, and so, it was, uh.
I've heard that before.
Yes, uh, so, if, if, it's perhaps feasible, that, uh, Public Works could squeeze this in anywhere from late fall through winter and into early spring.
I understand the seventeen thousand, and I understand the part of the trail that we're talking about, I think it's a good project, I think it makes sense. I have a hard times, sometimes, I understand grants is good, but, you know, by the time we process it, do the grant, then we go a whole year to, to do this portion. I mean, sometimes I think you have to look at some of these things and kind of bite the bullet, you know? Do we feel that portion of the trail should be completed? I don't, I mean, making it a, a year and a half, a two-year plan is, I, I just don't, you know, I, I don't know if that's. I mean, I think sometimes we can just make a decision, let's just go forward and do some of these things. And I think maybe that might be one of them. Have to say for two, go two, to go a year.
So, that was your last.
Well, in this case, I'm.
No, 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 what I'm trying to.
I, I'm, I'm trying to get a grant to.
I think he's, he's on your side on this.
I'm on your side, I'm trying to expedite that, sometimes some of these grants, if, if it's gonna be.
He doesn't wanna get an extension.
You know, I mean, I don't know.
Rebuttal, rebuttal.
Well, then, it's, it's not a rebuttal, but I, in, in the realm of our budget, where we have been trying to scrutinize every dollar, we argued for how long over trying to get the pools done. At this point, where I say, are we going to budget, how much was it, thirty, twenty-two thousand?
If done by a commercial contract, uh.
And I'm not advocating that.
If we were successful for a thirty thousand dollar grant, I estimate we would need another twenty-two thousand.
So, I, I would say that part, using any funding is lowest priority. However, using DPW, I think is a good idea, it's a good leverage. However, using DPW, I think is a good idea. It's a good leveraging of, uh, fund grants. But I just don't want to put the pressure on DPW to say, by next year, they're gonna have it done. Because other things may come up that will have to get done.
We're looking at the library and cemetery.
Library is done.
Yeah, but we've always looked to them to do a little bit more for the library.
Well, and I think, um, I should, I should, can I just, yeah, go first.
And maybe we can check with DPW, but I'm saying, I don't, I mean, my understanding of next year is, we're not going to be, DPW will not be building any roads. There won't be a Snook Road or anything of those things out there in general. And I understand we went with the cemetery project. I'm just saying, are we going to have the capability to do it with DPW next year? Being that we have less projects and someone like Snook Road, et cetera, are not on the table.
Well, we, we don't know. I think, there's a lot of unknowns.
I know that, throwing that out there.
And I'm not trying to put words in your mouth, but that's the big thing. There are unknowns. We don't know if we're gonna have a weather event. We don't know if, how, what our budget's gonna look like, because if our budget is, is compromised, we may have to do more things, you know, in-house, but, um.
I, I like to answer that question.
Okay, yep.
In my talking with the Director of Public Works, he would welcome taking on this construction project, because it would allow him to, uh, better utilize his, his road construction crew in slack times, with his, you know, there's opportunities to keep them, uh, more fully engaged. And, uh, late fall and, and some of this project could be done in the winter, too. Whereas he would not have a road crew doing any roadwork in the late fall and winter.
One more, one more.
Just one more, because I, just to, there may be a, um, a misconception out there that because we're not going to, say, reclaim more roads next year, we're gonna cut back, that Public Works is gonna have less projects. I think when we see that shift from reclamation to the smaller, uh, shim and overlay, overlay, that takes more work and puts it on DPW. They're gonna be busier next year, because they don't have a big project like Snook Road, not Snook Road, but A- Addison Road, to contract out. Where a contractor's gonna handle that. They're gonna be doing most of the work in-house. They're gonna be very busy next construction.
A lot of culverts and drainage and ditch work, yeah.
I think where, where, where I'm going with this is that, I think as each year goes by, I think more people embrace rails of trail. What, this, this, the people that turned out for the walks this year is what, I think was proved that, proved that. I think when we start talking about, hey, well, we'll, we'll do this, you know, we'll do a grant for some of the supplies, but yet we'll still use DPW, and then we're talking about extensions with twenty-one, twenty-eleven, twenty-twelve, then, I'd like to think that we could, that we could coordinate better than what we're doing and, and, and maybe move the project.
I just want to like allay some of your, um, fears or something, and, and not a fear, it's just doubts. Concerns, better word. I, I want to give, you know, kudos to DPW, especially, uh, Mike Hillhouse, who oversaw that library, uh, parking lot situation. He did a great job on that. They squeezed that in on a very busy year, and they got that done. And, um, they made, they did a tremendous job on that. I mean, there's another, like, I believe it's, uh, twelve to fourteen parking spaces now that the library is using, um, and they just did a, did a wonderful job.
And it's paved. You didn't even anticipate.
And it's paved, right. And, and we didn't even think it was gonna get paved, and it got paved. So I'm not too concerned that they won't be able to get it done, but I think is what Selectman Pierce said, and I think you did too, is that, let them, I, I'd rather not go into it myself saying, you know, this has gotta be a, a, a top two or three priority. I, I have, I have, I have faith in that they'll, that they're gonna get it done, but they'll probably get it done, you know, a couple days here, maybe two or three days here.
That's all I was saying. If it doesn't get done at a certain time.
It's not gonna be, if it doesn't get done, it's not gonna be the end of the world, but I have a pretty good feeling that it's gonna, that it's gonna get accomplished.
I'm just thinking, and I don't want it pending on, on this whole grant process, but I'm, you know, in other words.
Well, no, I think with the.
On that time staging of, of the, for the material.
We've, we've been successful for three years, uh, receiving this recreational trail program grant. Our applications are, you know, superb, and, uh, I'm very comfortable going in and asking for the grant, and I'm comfortable, I predict it'll be improved.
And don't get me wrong, I, 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 we all hope that that is the process, but I'm just saying, I don't want it to be contingent. I would think we would still try to go forward, so.
Last, I guess where I'm, I'm gonna ask, if we don't get that grant, I wouldn't anticipate going forward and spending seventeen thousand dollars on materials to do it.
See, I would. I mean, uh, somewhere along the line, are we ever going to, I mean, if we don't, is this a project we just want to leave such as that? Do we want it to be a ten, twenty-year project? I mean, that's the question.
I presented information to the board, what, four or five months ago?
Correct.
On a, a, a fully built project for the rail trail. And yes, along that line, I said, if it's business as usual with, uh, state grants and hiring contractors, it would be fourteen years was my estimate. Now, of course, if the whole trail was built under one contract in one year, it could be done for two hundred and fifty to three hundred thousand dollars. But, you know, that we don't have.
We don't have the money.
And we understand that, so I'm just looking for that piece in it, that fourteen years.
See, I don't.
It's a long time.
Yeah.
So this, this grant.
Phil's been to the Selectman for twenty.
Removes a remaining ADA barrier on the trail. And, uh, the sections on either side of that are fairly decent. You know, they're not perfect, nice ten-foot wide path, but they're usable.
All right. Um, I, I think the consensus of the board is to proceed with, with DPW involvement, so.
We'll do that.
Uh, next one, I know we had a discussion, a number eleven, um, town manager.
About ten.
Ten was, uh, we took off the table because it had to do with the head tax.
Good. Good. That's like putting somebody in debtor's prison. Saying you didn't pay your tax bill, we're not gonna let you renew your motor vehicle, so you can't go to work.
Can we tie that into the ordinance enforcement?
There you go, done. Okay, um, next one was a town manager. Um, there is a RSA that allows us to take a, a, a baby step in the direction of a, of a different form of government, um, by having the voters vote on whether or not to have a town manager. There would still be a Board of Selectmen, that town manager would still report to the Board of Selectmen, but the town manager would supervise the, uh, department heads.
No, hire and fire the department heads. The Selectmen have absolutely no authority over.
Excuse me? Supervise?
The, I think the statute, I think you're right, is I think it's hire and fire.
You're giving up that whole portion of Selectmen's authority to a town manager.
And they supervise, and they, and they supervise.
You do not hire and fire anymore. You're gone. That's, you don't have.
And do they supervise them?
No, we have nothing to do with employees.
Does the town manager supervise the department heads?
Absolutely.
All right, that's why I'm in favor of it.
Town managers charge all employees.
The, he, here's my, my take on it. I, I, I think that, uh, this, our current form of government, I know we had a charter commission. Um, I think we've outgrown it. I think it's difficult to, to think that we have five department heads and they have five different bosses, shall we say, supervisors. I just think it's problematic. It's ti, it's, uh, yes, there are some downsides to the town manager form of government, but I, I see this community with eighteen thousand people, and I just don't think that the current system of a Board of Selectmen with a town administrator is functioning, functioning at its best. And, um, you know, I'd be, I, I think that we need to focus more on, on policy and bigger vision things, and then let a town manager and department heads, uh, focus on all the smaller, the smaller type things. And I don't think that really occurs. I'd like to, I think the town manager would also, there'd be a greater degree of accountability, where, um, much like you would have like a superintendent of schools, where you, you know, the board would give, give, give their direction, and then it would be the town manager's responsibility to make sure it gets executed. But, uh, that's my opinion. For what it's worth, we're a Board of Five, so I figured I'd throw it out there for discussion and see what everyone thinks. Anybody want to comment on it? I don't take offense if you don't, if you agree or disagree. It's just, it's all our opinions, so.
I, I do agree with it. I think, I think when, and when you look at the board, and you talk about hiring and firing, part of the process that it, the board is, 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 it's, it's constantly changing. Uh, department heads have to get used to these different boards and the different, and the different, uh, different personalities, and I think a single point of contact for the department heads to go to, it, uh, it, it makes more sense. Uh, it, it, it creates better direction, and, and once again, I think it goes back to the part of, sometimes I think as a board, we get bogged down with, with these smaller items that shouldn't be here. And I think, and I think that's where the, the town manager would, would come in and, and handle that and direct it out to the department heads.
If I could add one thing, um, you know, thi- this is not a whole lot different than, than a superintendent of school situation. And when you're term, in terms of hiring and firing, um, the hiring or firing, which I was never a part of, of a, of I say a principal for an example. Yes, ultimately, that decision, that end decision is, is made by, uh, the, the superintendent, but there's, you know, I, typically, they, they, they seek that political cover. So oftentimes, the board will come up and they'll hand over the, 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 the top two finalists to, to that person to, to make a decision. So in essence, that board feels pretty good about who eventually is gonna, uh, be hired. And I mean, um, I think we've been pretty fortunate in who we've, who we've selected over the last, you know, many years in Goffstown. Um, but I, but I, I also think that there are more upsides to the town manager than there are, um, downsides to it. And there are some downsides. I'm not, um, not disagreeing with that, but as a, as a Selectman, I, I'd like to see some degree of progress in, in what we're doing, and I just, I, I think that's the route to go. I also think that the route to go is, is a little bit further than that, but, um, that requires a charter commission, and, um. What's that? Anyone else?
Well, I'm, I'm trying to put my hands around, and I think I would need to lay out the pros and cons. Powers that we currently have, powers we'd be giving up. But I sometimes feel, and, and going to what Selectman Fortier said, you know, we have an election and a new person comes in and there's changes, but I sometimes think the board acts as a, as a checks and balance. You have to have the right person as a town manager, and no reflection on our current town administrator, but I'm looking into the future, ten years from now, twenty years from now, and the wrong town manager can be very disruptive, whereas I think sometimes this board's power is kind of held in check by the diversity of, of the members. You know, it, it's very difficult to take a complete left turn and, and do something differently because of just the, the diversity on the board. And I was going somewhere, I had another thought, and it just like went right out.
Several town managers have told me that they don't see much of a difference, that they feel like they keep their board advised and, and keep them involved in decision-making. So I guess it depends, you, you're right, very much on who is in that position. And how, you know, do they go by the letter of this, or do they, or do they continue to involve their board with ma, what they consider major decisions?
And I think that's where I'm going, is I, I think that a politically astute town manager is going to include the Board of Selectmen on major decision-making. But, and, and, and a, and a reasonable and responsible Board of Selectmen is gonna give the town, uh, manager the ability to make decisions that don't necessarily need to be made by a five-member board. And, um, I, I just think our issues that we need to focus in on are probably more big-picture oriented, um, and maybe less on a, um, RFP for a pool. And I'm not saying that's good, bad, or indifferent, but, um, do I think that a town, uh, manager, if we talked about that we were gonna close down a pool, would probably come before a board to say, hey, I'm thinking about closing that? Yeah, if they were smart, they would, um, because it has some, it has some consequences in the community. But some of the little things, accepting of a road and this and that, I, I don't know. I just don't. You know, the board would actually get involved in it anyway. There's no doubt about that. But in terms of the, uh, holding accountable things, um, I think there's, there's a greater degree of, uh, to hold, to hold it accountable, to be consistent. Because right now, we are trying to manage five people, five people are trying to manage five people. Now it'd be one person, person managing, you know, four people. I think it's much easier to, um.
I, I've heard several times, you know, a lot of this stuff should be at a different level, and we need to be focusing on higher, broader, more overriding issues. And I, I'm trying to figure out, I mean, are we trying to say, okay, you know, our meetings last too long, there's too much work that we're doing here? And what is it that we want to focus on?
Well, I think a good, a, a really important one, I think, is an economic development piece. And, um, I just don't always get, uh, the sense that we are as in, you know, actively involved in the economic, you know, development piece as, as we could be. That, so that's, that's one. You know, creating more, you know, more, more policy-driven things as opposed to, you know, perform a day-to-day, just, you know, uh, more day-to-day decision-making. David first, and then I got Steve.
Would a manager be able to implement performance management? Performance evaluations? In a more efficient manner than this board doing it?
Well, that would be a silly question, but, um.
But it, we've, we've, we've struggled and talked about performance evaluations and a, a better performance management system, but we haven't had the time to fully develop that. A manager would.
Phil, you've been quiet.
Well, I've just listened to everybody. Personally, I don't prefer the town manager form of government. I think, uh, some of your comments, like, some of the things that appear to be, uh, things that we shouldn't be spending our time with. I've always dealt with those things since I've been on the board, and, uh, I think that we've, we, a lot of things that we should have, uh, been reviewing a little bit, uh, we don't anymore because we've given up to other staff. As far as the issue about spending the time on a RFP for the pool, you have to remember one thing, that Parks and Rec director is new to this position. This is something he's not that well familiar with. And I guess, I sit here and, and some of the questions that I ask and some of the questions that other members ask, that if we had gone back to a little closer working of, of a Se- a Selectman that's assigned to a department, a little bit closer working, I would anticipate that the Selectman who had Parks and Rec would know quite a few of the questions that were answered or were asked of tonight, rather than not knowing that much about, about it. Where, where I feel that the board, that there's a difference between the way that the board functions in a way that the board in the past has functioned, is that there was a closer connection between an individual Selectman and apartment that he was assigned to. A little bit closer, a little bit no, more involvement in that, which makes a difference when you come to, uh, Selectmen's Business Meeting. Selectmen's Business Meeting, um, should be focused on that business. So rather than spending twenty minutes on an RFP, some of that stuff would have, would have been, uh, worked out before it came here, because if that was my department and I knew about this, I wouldn't, I, I would say, it's not ready to go to the board yet. There were some other things that need to be done, and, and I would work with that department head to, to get it to that point that it came to the board. So there, from, from those perspectives.
Like I said, I, I think the community has grown tremendously. Uh, the, the, um, the makeup of this Board of Selectmen has also changed, and, you know, I'm not sure what the future will bring in terms of are people gonna, you know, be serving as long as you have served. I, that, that could be the case. It's probably not going to be the case. I don't, I don't think the future's gonna have people that are gonna be doing it for fifteen or, or twenty years. Um, it's a, it's a part-time slash full-time job for many of us who have full-time, all of us have, except for you, you're retired, but you, um, it's, it's a full-time job, you know? It's a part-time, full-time job, you know, doing this. And, um, are, is the community best served by people who are doing it in a part-time capacity? With all of the different things that are going on. And I'll tell you, even over the last four years in which I've been a Selectman, um, the, you know, the rules have changed. I mean, in terms of all the different things, whether, I mean, on the environmental side, oh my God. I mean, it, it's, it's crazy how. I mean, in terms of all the different things, whether, I mean, on the environmental side, oh my God, I mean, it's, it's crazy how, what we have to, you know, kind of pay attention to. There's a lot more, you know, you know, on our, on the plate to get, to get done. I just, I don't, I just don't see it as, as, as effective as it could be. And I would, I'm always one to try to, try something new, you know, and we've been doing this for a long time. And I, there's a lot of little things that I think we could do a little better on.
Just, just one word of caution, the grass is always greener on the other side of the fence.
I, but I, I'd all, if I could, may I respond for a second? We are, I believe, the twelfth largest city slash town community in the state of New Hampshire. I think we're twelve, okay? If I'm not mistaken, we're up there.
I thought we were thirteenth.
Okay, twelve or thirteen, I'm off by one. Okay, we're, I'm close, okay? There are, there are some smaller communities who have almost a city form of government. So in terms of, I don't know, and I haven't done the research yet to say, you know, how many communities that are twelve and above have Boards of Selectmen and town administrators? I'll have to check that out. I would believe that the majority of them are man, I know that Manchester, Portsmouth, Nashua, Keene, those are bigger than us. And I don't think, and all of them, I think, believe have, you know, either mayors or councils or aldermen, that type of thing. So again, I'm not, I'm not casting, you know, judgment, you know, either way. But we are at a population and we're, we are large, that I think it needs to get revisited. And not to mention the fact that we throw in two water precincts, a sewer commission, uh, you know, all these different committees and commissions. And, and don't get me wrong, towns and, and cities have all those things that they have to deal with as well. But it makes it very, very difficult to, to get things done. So I got Steve, then I have Nick.
And I will mention that where I was going with it a little bit before you spoke in with allocations of resources and time management. And I'll agree with you also, and I think you're a case in point regarding the RFP for the pool. I think, I think it's a perfect example where, where this process, the process we have now, what didn't work for that sole reason were, you talk about people who have full-time jobs doing part-time, you know, running here part-time between Mondays you're here for this meeting, then you're here for EDC, then you're here for Parks and Rec, and then all of a sudden, that, that RFP comes in on Friday, that was this last Friday, and then we see it on Monday. So you're saying, well, what, where was, where was the involvement in between? And then I'll even say, I'll take some, I'll take some blame for that RFP going like that because I wasn't involved maybe as much as I should have. But part of that process was that thing didn't come out till Friday. And the other thing is, I'll even say from an experience level, I was expecting actually for that RFP to go through and, and check, you know, the words, I thought that was going to go up through, through, you know, up through the process where it goes through into, into the town administrator office, they, they look at, then it comes to us. Okay? So part of that would be as a, from a, part of that would be that when you have all these different people rotating in and out, you're going to have these problems. You're going to have these situations where I think, where you look at a town manager, there's that single point of contact where department heads would be funneling that process throughout. And I don't think you'd have what you saw today. Nick?
As I mentioned earlier, I'd, I'd like to really see a, a breakdown because of duties. Because I'm not sure, one of the nice things about our government and our form of government, it's, it's, it's very pure, it's very direct, and we're very close to the voters. And, and I, I would have to see what, to what degree we're putting another layer between decisions and, and the voters. But if, and I don't want to put it this way, but if, it, it kind of seems that, that people need to examine the time requirements of this position, which are extensive, when they decide to take on this position versus then saying, let's reduce the requirements. I mean, it, it is an extensive job. There's a lot of preparation time, there's a lot of meeting time, and, and I think people need to know that when they come into this position.
And I, and I think that, you know, I would, I would agree with you wholeheartedly, but it also goes back to, you know, there are, there are time constraints. And what do you want, what do you think that a, a board should be spending, you know, their, you know, their time doing? And, um, and it does, it does come down to the fact that if it's safe to say that, that you're, you have ten to twenty hours in a week to do the selectman's job, that, um, you know, where are you spending, you know, those, those hours? And, and if you're spending those hours more than likely on things that are more routine, that are more managerial, then I believe that, that's what the town manager should be doing. If it's more of, you know, setting policy, performance appraisals, um, you know, having discussions about negotiating contracts, so all these different things. Those are, those are, uh, those are, those are time-consuming. So I, I guess what I'm trying to say is that we do get, right or wrong, we do get bogged down on some of the little things. And some of the bigger things take a lot longer to, to, to get done. And that's, that's, we're, I guess we're all entitled to our opinion, that's, that's, that's just mine. And David, you have, did you have, have your hand up or?
No.
Okay. Again, we can, I'm not offended if, if we say, uh, no interest in this, if we want more information, the pros and cons list.
Yeah, I'm not opposed or.
Well, I haven't really made up my mind on where I stand, I'd like to look at more information.
Were this to be an article, Sue, is there an implementation date? I, something like that can't happen overnight, you'd have to s-. To me, it would be a, a new position, too. Not, not necessarily the current one.
No, if it passes, the Board of Selectmen hires the town manager.
Right, okay. As soon as we seek, put out a job announcement.
Well, you better have enough money in the budget, too, for a town manager, because it's going to be one and a half times what you pay for a town administrator.
That's probably where I was going, Phil, thank you. So it, the budget would have to be.
One and a half times? I don't think so, but it's okay. I mean, I'm just, I, I, I've looked at the LGC books, I, I don't, I, is it more, yes, is it one and a half times? I, I don't think we're.
Well, just remember what you said. You want a town manager.
Right.
You need to pick the salaries of a town manager to compare to a comparable community. Don't compare a town manager to a population of nineteen thousand to a, a, a community of ten thousand.
So where did you get your number from, just out of curiosity?
It's another fifty percent more of the town administrator, because of all the town administrators that I know what they've made and the research that I've done on it. I did a term paper on it, on the town manager former government.
It wasn't twenty years ago, though, right?
No, it wasn't twenty years ago.
All right, so we're getting.
I think that's, it's like twenty-five percent more than Goffstown's right now.
We'll, um, we'll get, we'll get some more information. Next is number twelve, that's the Main Street program. I know some have opinions, strong opinions both ways, maybe want to chat on this one. Go for it.
Uh, it's the same position I've always had, we've, we've said no to other nonprofits, it's a nonprofit organization. And as much as we, or in past years have endorsed it, I think people are still, have expressed that they would like to donate to the communities of their, their choice. And I always think, I, I always held that it should stand on its own and.
I'm sorry, which one are we talking about?
Main Street program.
Oh, you're talking about Main Street?
Yeah.
All right, I, I support it, so I have.
Well, the only thing I could say about Main Street, ever since the very beginning, the first time we put it on, the board said that it would always be on. It was not something that was going to wind up in the budget like everything else, that this, if, that if we were going to go forward supporting this, it would always be on.
I, I would correct that. I think if you go back to the original war, uh, town meeting, it was a three-year, it was, it was presented at town meeting to be a three-year startup.
I'm not talking about the startup, I'm talking.
Oh, no, I'm saying it, and that's, it was never presented that it was going to be an ongoing.
No, 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 Board of Selectmen have always said that it would be.
Point is, I'm, I'm saying it was presented to the voters at a town meeting that it would be a three-year warrant article. Each year for three years to get them going, it would be presented as a warrant article.
I'm.
Yes, sir.
Yeah, I, I'm in favor of keeping the amount of money going to Main Street. It, they have put on events which help define the nature of our community and organize those events. And the amount of money we contribute towards the nonprofit is a portion of what their total budget is.
And, and please don't misconstrue what I'm.
But to me, it, it shows that the, the overall community is supporting of what they're endeavoring to do. And the amount of publicity they bring to this town is well worth their money.
And that's, and I'm, I'm, I do not want to diminish what they do. But in a consistency, we have said no to the Red Cross. And you could have that same argument, they do a lot for the town in times of disasters, and we can put a warrant article on and the town voters can decide if they want to support it or not. But we've always, as a board, said, no, it's a nonprofit, and people have consistently said, I want to decide where I want to donate my money. So why are we not consistent? A nonprofit is a nonprofit, if that's the position we hold.
Yeah, I like to try to respond to that. And I understand and I respect everything that you're saying about the Red Cross and everything. But I think the little difference on here is the Main Street program was tied in with economic development community. And the twelve thousand dollars that we contribute towards, you know, fifteen thousand or whatever the amount is, because the amount has varied a few times, that amount of money is, is a very small amount of money to the amount of money that they do generate. And I think that, that shows the commitment of the community towards its own economic development. I mean, it comes down to, you say, well, yeah, I want economic development, okay, fine, what are you willing to contribute? I mean, fifteen thousand dollars towards the, and the benefit that, that they generate. I mean, I, 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 I think it's, 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 to me, it's a no-brainer.
And I think the consensus you'll have is, is that same sentiment, so.
Okay. Is that, I think that's all we have for, for public business, we have some, uh, I'm sorry, we have some committee reports.
Yeah, before you go on to committee reports, the, I got a phone call today from someone who was objecting to Parks and Rec you, allowing a group to use their facility without a user agreement, without a fee. And that group was going to, it would be, it'd be a closed session, the public wouldn't be allowed in.
Hey, hold on a second.
Having a speaker.
The group that's wanting is complaining, or is it another?
No, and not an individual called in today to, because this individual wanted to participate and listen to a speaker that this group was having, but was told that he wouldn't be allowed because he wasn't a registered Republican.
And I know we don't have a, we don't have a facility use policy per se.
Only for Grassmere, which is a forum.
But if an individual, let's say myself, and I want to hold a party here, and I pay two hundred and fifty dollars to have a party here, I'm entitled to invite anybody who I want, even though it's a public building, I'm renting the space.
Right, as long as that fee was adopted and structured and you were signing.
I don't think, I don't think you have to, just by virtue of the fact that it's, that it's a public building, I don't, I don't, I'm, I don't know this for sure, but I would think that if you're renting it for a private purpose, that you could not, if it's for a party, I don't have to invite other people to my party.
Correct, if you had a facility use policy that allowed private use of a facility for a certain fee, that would be correct. You wouldn't, that would be my opinion, you wouldn't, just because it's a public building, you wouldn't have to allow others in.
So, but we don't have a policy right now.
Right.
Yeah.
Does, currently, do we allow users to, I don't want to use the word rent, but reserve the rec building for their exclusive use? Whether it's a ballet class, a basketball class, a, currently?
Yes, we do.
For donations?
There's no donations set up, there's, and, and organizations use it, but they usually have something to do with the Parks and Rec function. The, the current use is a Parks and Rec. It's either, you know, try town soccer, it's a baseball team, or it's someone doing a program.
Right, and I, okay, let's just say hypothetically that, um, uh, junior baseball is having their draft at the, their baseball, Little League baseball draft at the Parks and Rec building. I would think that they would have the ability to say, uh, if someone just wanted to come in and watch, they'd say, I'm sorry, but this is a private thing for, only for members of junior baseball to participate in and.
Coaches.
Or coaches, thank you. But if someone just wants to come in and sit down and watch the thing, that they would be within their rights to say, I'm sorry, but this is, you're not welcome, or think. You think, is everybody, you think I'm off on this, or you're giving me a lo-?
No, I, it's a common sense approach.
To me, it's, if you're re, it, it, yeah, and especially if you're paying.
Right.
Now, that might not bode well for some, say, like, hey, this is a public, a public building. But then again, then it's our, then it becomes part of our problem now in terms of a facility use. Do we want to have language in our facility use that bars people from using the facilities, or, you know, based upon different things? You know? It's a sticky wicket.
It is. That needs to be clarified in a facility use policy.
Right, and that was where I was going to go. I, I think it is a public building and we do allow nonprofit organizations to reserve it and use it. So I think we're being fair in that respect, in that the organization that's objecting to this use in particular could next week reserve it themselves if they wanted to have a, a meeting. So my suggestion would be to continue to allow the use as we have in the past, but let's start working towards a facility use policy.
And just have some kind of user agreement, because there should be, like at Grassmere, they have to show us a certificate of insurance when they're using our space. I think we should be doing that also at Parks and Rec.
I'm not, Phil, then, Steve.
Yeah, just, here's a cou- couple of things here, though. We allow, um, homeowners associations to use public buildings. A homeowners association meeting, I don't believe is a public meeting.
Correct.
It's private.
Okay, it's a private meeting. So whether it's at Grassmere, or whether it's at Parks and Rec, I guess I don't really see the difference.
We only have a policy at Grassmere, we don't have one for other municipal buildings. We have a user agreement form for the Grassmere Town Hall. We don't have one for any other building.
But if the, if they were okay, if they were, if it was okay for an organization to use the Grassmere Town Hall because they met all the requirements of our user fi, of our user requirement of this here, and now they're over at Parks and Rec, I would assume that they're still meet those requirements unless for some reason they cancel their insurance.
It's just a change of the venue, that should not, that doesn't matter much.
No.
So our facility use policy, whatever we have at Grassmere, one would think, would extend it to the others. Steve, you wanted to add?
I was wondering, could you bring up the insurance piece again?
When any group uses a town facility that's not associated with government.
Right.
Okay, they have to perform, name us as an insured on their certificate of insurance.
Right, so it's not an official function of the town.
I understand it, so if one was to go into the Parks and Rec building and put on a dance class, are you saying insurance would have to be, they'd have to have an insurance piece? And here's where I'm going to have some exception to this. I think sometimes we take these things and we overcomplicate them and, and, and we ruin what the point of, of, of purpose of what some of these buildings were meant to do. And I, I go.
Our insurance company requires.
It requires.
I understand that, but I'm just saying, do you think right now that there's a proof of insurance for the people, for the lady who goes there and puts on the dancing class?
I have no idea.
We better hope so. Because if somebody, I mean, I mean, if somebody twists their ankle or something, or breaks a leg.
I, I don't know if that's the case enough, but I'm just saying, let's just say, and I'm just want to put this out there, okay? Someone goes on and puts on a dance class, you know, and you can understand that when they do it there, it's nowhere like going to the buildings in Pernaba where they put on these very, you know, they have, you know, they're, they're, they have professional training or whatever you want to, uh, however they want to, however they classify it. And just some people that get together who don't have the funding, you understand the cost structure that you're putting in place with this? And we, and if, we defeat some of the processes of what we're trying to do for people in the community, that's why I think we're getting a little.
That's not, but that's not our fault.
I'm just, so I'm just saying, you know, we overcomplicate these things. I'm just, I'm just saying, you know, we overcomplicate these things and then we-
Not we, not we. The insurance companies and legislatures.
I understand that.
And courts. When these classes are put on, now, is there a charge for that building?
Not now. There's no charges for anything except men's basketball.
There will be.
Do these instructors put dance classes on for free?
No.
That is a charge.
I, I don't-
Hang on. So now, we have an instructor using the facility for free who is charging students, making money. Are you suggesting that the taxpayers of Goffstown should be underwriting their insurance?
I think you would need to see what one of these classes looks like and what these people's time will put it in. And the other piece is that, I, I'm just saying-
I don't think that plays into-
I, I, you can shake all day about this, but it'd be like saying, I'm going there, another group goes there and doesn't charge for it. Would you, you would still say, hey, where's, where's this insurance? I'll even take the salary out. A group goes in there to use it for a meeting hall, for, you know, they're allowed to use it for their, let's say, I think, I believe the Un-Canoe Mountain Ears would go there as a snowmobile club and they would have their meetings. We're saying, hey, by the way, you better have some insurance. I mean, where are we going with this?
No, you gotta have insurance on your car, on your home, I mean, it is what it is.
Wait, wait, do we walk in this building here, are we covered?
Yes.
Yes.
Why?
Because the town has insurance.
And we're employees.
Yeah.
Okay. Now, someone else comes walking in here, they're not an employee of the town, and they come in for a meeting. Are they covered?
Yes.
Public meeting.
Public meeting. Okay. What, are we saying we have nothing in place where we can use, insurance and coverage within, let's say, a Parks and Rec building where someone goes in there to sign up for baseball or anything like that? How does that work?
That's different.
Because typically, these organizations, if you're baseballer, softball, whatever, you have, you have a policy.
They're big organizations, but what, what-
If you're a homeowners association, you, you know, even then, you, as a homeowners association, you have an insurance policy.
I understand, I'm paddling up here, but I'm saying, we're taking away from these small groups is what I'm trying to get at.
I'm not, I'm not denying that. I'm just saying, but the society in which we live in is looking for pockets everywhere.
We're taking away from these small groups and I just, I think it's a shame. And it's a shame.
Steve, I, I use, the Friends of the Rail Trail uses the Park building once a year for ski sale. We're a small group, dozen people active. And when we use that building, the insurance cost is half of all our administrative expenses.
Thank you.
Now, but we regard it as business as usual.
Cost of doing business?
Cost of re, of having a facility.
Yes, so the interesting, it's going back to what we're talking about. So we have a, a group that is going to have this meeting. They're going to exclude certain people because of having, you know, a speaker. Okay. Let's, let's not talk in terms, let's be honest with what we have here. We have the Republican Committee of Goffstown wants to have every speaker and they're just inviting selected guests, period. And, and if it were the Democratic Party or the, or any other party in town that wanted to have their own deal at that facility or any other town facility, they would be charged a fee.
What about a scout?
It doesn't matter. It doesn't matter what it is.
They would do the same thing.
It doesn't matter if it's a scout meeting, it doesn't matter if it's a parent-teacher group, it doesn't matter what, they have a right to say, I'm sorry, but you're not welcome. I, I don't, I don't, if you're paying it and you're renting it out, it's just like a per, a party. I mean, you can, you can exclude people.
They're not renting, right now.
I don't care if they're renting.
Will be like that.
They're scheduled in.
They're scheduled in.
They're scheduled in. They're scheduled in. That's there a lot of time that they scheduled in, took the time to schedule it.
And the director of Parks is saying, yes, you may bring your group in here.
And they have, they have the right to say, I'm sorry, but we have a guest list and you're not on my guest list. That's, I know people might not like that answer. That's my opinion that you have that right.
So just do, use the same user agreement that we use at Grassmere for-
We'd say that for any, anytime we're allowing the use of a public building to a non-governmental entity, they should follow the policy.
Okay.
All right.
Thank you.
Like I said, might, people might not understand that, but that's, you know. Okay, let's go under HR Committee. Steve, you weren't able to attend that one, right? Mr. Pierce, you attended that. You have two minutes to recap it.
Which committee report is this?
HR. Next. Okay, Budget Committee. While you're, I'll go to Budget Committee first, while you're going. The Budget Committee held their, they had a Saturday session, went over the school budget. We then met last week and had Superintendent of Schools go over some, some additional questions. There are budget deliberations, or should say discussions are going to start next Tuesday, which I believe is the four? Third? Thirtieth, okay, thirtieth. Unfortunately, I cannot attend. Steve's my backup. He cannot attend. I don't know how mission critical it's going to be because they're doing school, so-
The studying with the deliberations on the school?
No, not school, but they're, they're doing, they're, they're starting their Q and A. They're going through the budget for the school. They've already done that for the town.
Oh, okay.
So it's a school, mostly a school-type session. I could, if no one would like to attend, I could certainly let Dan know that we're, I'll just be absent and take it from there. If somebody has a desire to attend the meeting, then I'll let Dan know that you, that you're in attendance, but-
Do they have their schedule yet, in the deliberating?
I don't have that with me, but it's set for Tuesdays and Thursdays through the end of December, December 21st.
I need to have that schedule. I only aware the actual mileage of the 30th and then their regular scheduled meeting.
No, it's, it's, it's every Tuesday and Thursday till, till December 21st.
And they conclude on the 21st?
Yes, but however long it takes. That's what they said. Andrew, am I correct on that?
As I recall, Thursdays were open.
I thought they were coming back at their next meeting and finalizing, right?
They wanted, they wanted, they wanted to skip, they, I, I, from what Dan said, let's plug them in. If we need them, we need them, but, that's right, I thought he said, so.
Reserve it.
He's, yes, reserve it, right.
And is that timed, 7:00 PM?
6:30 to 9:30.
9:15 or 9:20, he said, yeah.
Yeah.
Because they have to be out by 9:30, correct?
I'll check my schedule. I may be able to-
Okay. And that was it for, for Budget Committee. You ready?
Yes.
Okay, HR?
HR Committee met last week. One of the items on the discussion concerned annual leave, how much annual leave an employee has, depending on their length of employment. Currently, it's after an employee's been here one year, it's flexible about what their date of arrival is, but it's between five and 10 days.
I'm going to stop you, if I may. Are there bargaining unit people that were at that meeting?
No.
They're all non-bargaining, non-affiliated folks, okay? Does this have any impact on our bargaining unit negotiations? And if it does, if it may compromise our bargaining unit negotiations, then I would prefer that we discuss it in a non-public setting.
We're, we were, we discussed the, upon what anniversary dates, various amounts of vacation time are allocated.
That would be, that to me might, I'm, I'm just saying, I think that crosses the line.
And we also, we also discussed sick leave time.
Let's, if we can, we'll, we'll discuss that in non-public. Due to the fact that we have four contracts that we're negotiating and it could compromise our, our position, our negotiating position. So we'll put that towards the end. I'm sorry, David. Budget Committee, we did. Library met. I just wanted to briefly let, let you know that a gentleman, I mentioned his name before, Ken Richards of Lead Dog Builders offered to build a gazebo for the community in celebration of the 250th anniversary of the town. He lives on your street, Mill Street. He first offered it up to the library and the library at their last meeting decided not to pursue that. I have yet to let Ken know, so if he finds out this way, I apologize. But the library decided to take a pass. However, I went to the, then went to the Parks and Rec Commission meeting and the Parks and Rec Commission is very much interested in Ken's offer and they're going to be getting some more information. So I will connect Ken with the Parks and Rec Commission as to what type of, you know, where, where this thing might be located. Will it be at one of the parks? Would it be at the Parks and Rec building? But Ken has, what, what he wants to do is he wants to solicit the donations and obviously he's going to build it. But he wants to try to do that over the winter, solicit the donations and then build it in the spring for the town, which I think is-
Nice.
So if anybody else would like to do anything like that, let us know. It was very much appreciative for, for Ken and his generous offer to provide something that will be a legacy piece for the community.
Anyone think of the comment?
Huh?
Putting it on the comment?
There was some discussion there. One of the things was that it would be like a, almost like a bandstand.
Right.
One of the problems with the comment for music is that it's awfully noisy, as cars, if you've ever been to any of the concerts. The traffic that goes by and, and the thought was, if you're going to have a, more of a bandstand-type concert, how would it, would it? That's why when we talked to the, to the library initially, would that, their new piece of green space work? They had some concerns about vandalism and kids hanging out, et cetera, so that's when I turned it over to Parks and Rec. But, so that was really the, the thrust of that that I, I left shortly thereafter. So Conservation, Nick, you were up next.
Conservation, it's just, we met on Wednesday evening. Major items, there was one we reviewed, a request for a recommendation to the zoning board regarding 215 Wallace Road map, 5 lot 73, which is the New Morning.
The Morning, yeah, yeah, yeah.
There was a request from, for comment from Conservation for a variance request for road frontage as well as relief from wetland buffers. And the major conversation at the meeting was whether a variance is the proper procedure since the zoning ordinances allow for waivers through the planning board process of relief from the wetland buffers. In other words, was this kind of an end around the actual process that's in place? So at the, the next zoning meeting, there will be a representative from Conservation there to, to discuss that. And then there was also an issue, there was a, one section of the zoning ordinance that was not addressed in the variance request, which was relief from the surface waters buffers, which was not there. And then I did ask the commission if there was any thought or any projects on the horizon for land easement purchases.
Right.
Purchases, excuse me, and the Conservation Commission as well as the representative from Open Space said they did not foresee anything for this upcoming town meeting in March. And then finally, there was just a request to the planner or the code enforcement officer to check on map six lot one, map 35 lot 35, which were two past developments. One was the old Miller's Landing where terrain alteration permits were sought, received. There has been terrain alteration. The project really has not gone anywhere and in the last year or so, the property just sits partially excavated. Fill has been coming in, so there's a request to see what can be done to at least seed and loom, prevent erosion, get the sites in a more environment, environmentally friendly condition than they sit now. As well as a request to the zone enforcement officer to view map 27 lot 6-1 for possible violations that may be occurring on that property.
When I, when I read the minutes and one of the questions prior to the meeting that I asked Sue was that, there were three requests to have the town, the code enforcement officer or someone look into something. And I know that there has been some, some issues with regard to the timeliness of the code enforcement officer taking a look at things, the number of requests. We have citizens that send in emails requesting assistance from code enforcement, selectmen, I mean, that, that person's time is limited, safe to say. I guess where I'm trying to go is that at what point, we have boards that are making requests for someone to, to, to do things. And whether it is code enforcement or whether it's the town engineering department, at what point do we have to institute a process whereby we need it formal and we need to know how many hours it's going to take to do it and to try to allocate the resources? I mean, Steve mentioned it earlier today. We have finite resources. We split that code enforcement job up to do that, plus economic development to try to save town money. But in doing so, it has stretched us, you know, pretty thin. And if I had to ask the Conservation Commission, of the three things that you asked for assistance on, how much time is it going to take and what, and prioritize them for me in terms of critical to, to non-critical or anywhere in between? Then it could at least go to the town administrator, or if the board, it doesn't really matter, to say, okay, we, we're going to allocate that time. There are a lot of entities that do that. There are, you know, time is money and we have a finite amount of resources and sometimes people have to make the decision as to which ones we're going to pursue. And that's my concern here is, you know, we've got three requests for something to get done. That could, that could take 10 hours this week. I, I don't know. And then there might be some, something else on the economic development side that could take 40 hours. Which one's going first?
But isn't that what we pay those individuals, the code enforcement officers, to prioritize their workload?
No, I just, I, I disagree. I disagree because-
You don't have a problem with that? If you leave it up, the, the problem that you have is that there are so many requests and there are so many requests because I, I have, I've had some citizens that, you know, that put in complaints. And there has to be, I mean, there's only so many hours in a week. Any amount of time that goes, goes into this. I mean, somehow there has to be some type of prioritization. And I don't think it's a, I don't think it, you know, that's an, that's, I wouldn't want to be in a situation that all the requests are coming to me. I have to, I have to prioritize them and no matter how I prioritize them, I'm going to get hell from everybody.
Like I said, I, and this is, this is by no means, you know, critical of Conservation, but those things, there are three requests there. In another month, there might be three more requests. What, what we don't know is that there are five or 10 requests from citizens.
But it's just not Conservation that's correct. I mean, I was, I was going through emails and one out of, every third email was from one, one person regarding, you know, information and-
So now what are we supposed to say? Oh, don't listen to that one citizen. Don't follow up on that one because we want you to follow up on this one. But, 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 but don't do that because EDC, which you also work for, wants you to work on this revitalization thing to do a project. And I think at some point, when you have a person who works, you know, 35, 40 hours a week, you know, at some point, their boss or someone has to say, okay, we've got competing interests here. There's, you know, there's typically 60 hours of work in a given week and I gotta, we gotta prioritize when we can squeeze it in. Or to at least respond back to them saying, you know what, this person is working on this. I can't get to this. Or you have to prioritize. Which one is the most important to you? Because I'm only giving you five hours a week. I mean, in the world of, say, computer programming, okay, you know, company's budget, you know, 100,000 man-hours for, for computer programming. And, and there are managers who sit back and say, yeah, I need this for my sales department, I need that for my operations department. And they're like, okay, sales is more important this year, so they're getting, they're getting 80,000 hours and this, this one's getting 20. And I'm sorry, but other stuff, it's not getting done.
And I completely understand what you're, the concept, but I'm a citizen and I have a question about zoning and a property or regardless of what it is. And I call that in to the code enforcement officer. Are you suggesting that they would then prepare something that would estimate how much time they would need to spend on that? Then it would go to Sue?
No.
Or the board?
No, what I'm, what I'm proposing is that I, I think we know what an individual has for a particular job, okay? And I think it would be fairly reasonable to say that, okay, over the course of your week or month, how many hours do you spend on citizen issues? Okay, so I'm going to devote, you know, 10 of my hours every week towards my citizen issues. Now, the next thing is say, how much do you spend on conservation issues? Well, I usually spend like, you know, 15, 20 hours a week on that stuff, okay? How much you spend on economic development? Ah, I don't know, five, maybe seven? And then what you realize is, hmm, we have an economic development issue in this town, but yet we have a person and we have now only devoted 15% of our resource into that piece, but we have devoted-
Who is our economic development person?
Derek. It's a competing, I mean, he does both jobs, so, and it's not just Derek. I can use a town engineer as another example. It's like, how much time do we want the town engineer to be working on this particular issue when we have another one that might be time sen, time-sensitive and may cost us a lot of money, but yet we're, we're working on this other one? And it, and who determines where, now, and that person is put in a really awkward position because they now have to try to appease 10 masters. Whereas what I'm saying is that the ultimate authority of who does what in this town is this board. We determine, you know, where the resources go. Let's be honest. Now, and we would then tell our department heads, hey, we want to get this thing done. Now, and we would then tell our department heads, hey, we want to get this thing done. So, but yet the system that we have in place says, no, no, no. Not only do you have a board of selectmen that gives you orders, but you have department heads, you've got committees at the yin yang. You've got to take orders from fifteen different entities or fifteen different people.
We're talking two different things. No one's saying that they have to take, he has to, or she has to, whoever is in that position has to take orders from anyone. And I think I just said, they're, I mean, if we want to set parameters and say, you know, out of your week, X percentage of your time needs to go to economic development and X percentage of your time needs to go to code enforcement issues and X percentage of your time needs to go to citizen flights. I mean, that's as far as we can go, but as far as, I think I heard you say, there needs to be a formal report. How many hours it's going to take? I mean.
Yeah, because, no, no. If Conservation wants time.
They don't know.
Well, you know what? They should know because then you're just making willy-nilly requests for someone's time to do something. That's not good resource management. I mean, if, if it's going to take five hours to deal with this one property and, and two hours to deal with the other one and then six hours on the other one, well, I know. And then I got to write the reports up and do, well, guess what? Before you know it, I've just now chased. Now, are those three things important to you and this board or are they important to Conservation?
Well, I would imagine that their charge is Conservation, so it.
Right, but I'm.
Into Conservation.
Right, but again, our job as the elected board is to determine what has the most priority. And I'm not diminishing anything here, okay, because obviously they believe that's important. But in a world of competing interests, this board or the department head is the arbiter of what comes first. And I think we should have a greater say in that.
I'm not, I'm not disagreeing and I don't want to have a one-on-one. But I guess what I'm saying is, I don't think Conservation is going to be able to estimate how much time it's going to take. Simply because they don't, they may send a regret, a request to our code enforcement officer and he may in fifteen minutes send an email back saying, you know what, I just sent something to them last week. Or they're being investigated by DES or whatever. Or he may say, I haven't the slightest idea.
I, I, I agree with that. I'll get you in a second. I do think that you have a, you should have a window of, yes, is this a one to two hour, a four to five hour? Because some of those things do take, if you're going to meet with someone to discuss it, it means you're sending out a letter. You're going to meet with them. You have to recap the conversation in a letter. Yeah. I mean, and the other thing is, I would want the, any department or, or any individual to know that when you make a request, it takes time. I mean, we request things all the time. I asked Sue for, for something from DPW today. That might have taken three or four hours, but did I want it? Yeah. I had to do it the roundabout and it's something that we need to keep, keep an eye on. But I'm fully aware of when I ask for something, then it takes department head or, or staff time. I don't always get that impression. And then all of a sudden, our, our code enforcement guy, you know, gets complaints because he's not responding quickly enough. But yet is there a realization that this individual or the town engineer or anybody else has all these other things they have to do? Steve?
I'm just going to make it a little simpler, but it's competing requests for time and resources. And part of that is that the prioritization is going to be what is in the best, in best benefit to the town and what is the general direction? And so going back to the code enforcement officer, who does he have to, who, who does he have to report to?
It'll be Janice.
Town administrator.
Town administrator. And if, 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 let's just say Sue was out of the loop and those things are coming direct, how do you, how do you manage to that? In other words, I, I, I'm not sure, I mean, I know when we make requests, sometimes you look for how much time it's going to, in other words, when, what they're trying to do is make you, make people understand that when you do make requests, there's, there's time, there's resource available to it. How do, how do you, how do you prioritize it? Where does it go to and how many others are coming funnel? There has to be a point of contact where it comes in and funnels out.
I'm just going to ask a question here of our town administrator because I think some of this stuff is probably discussed at a weekly staff meeting.
A monthly staff meeting, yes.
Okay, mon, okay, well, I guess in, because of time constraints, you only have a monthly staff meeting. You don't have a weekly, I guess this is, you know, this is, this is part of what, you know, everybody's multitasking. We're short, you know, we're limited resources.
But it would be nice, it would be nice to know that when I, when I see this, I don't know which one is the most important. I don't know on a scale of one to ten, is it critic, mission critical or is it, or it can wait? This way it gives that individual or anybody who's looking at it saying, you know what, they've got three things. One of them is mission critical, the other two aren't, and at least there's a record of that. So that I can go and that, or you or anyone can take a look and say, yeah, that person worked on this one first because it was the most important.
Can I, can I, can I try to, can I try to condense or, or basically? I think what, what I'm getting here is that we need to let the committees that we serve on understand when they have requests from staff, that they have, if they have multiple requests, to please prioritize them because staff's time, we have limited resources and our staff's time is pressed by the amount of requests that they have. So if they prioritize them, okay, at least the top priority one would get addressed and don't get upset if it takes time.
And.
And that's reasonable.
Right, and we have the same thing that, you know, as Steve mentioned, we have a handful of citizens who occupy a lot of staff time. And that's the same, and that's the same issue. I mean, so we've got people out there that are, that are, hey, what are you doing? Bring in more tax base or what are you? Right, and our, my response would be, we're doing almost nothing because we are dealing with about six to ten people in this town who suck up this person's time, dealing with trash cans that are not in the right place or a sign that's attached to a telephone pole or other things. Now, they all are valid. They all are extremely valid. But if we're looking at priorities, where do we want to place our priorities?
And can I speak to that, especially with, with email? That email goes up, it goes out with a distribution. And I know five of us read that same piece and then it goes to Sue and then it goes to Derek and then it goes to DPW, the police department. So on one of these, I could have ten, you multiply it by ten people looking at it, reading on it. And when you're seeing one out of three emails and, or other ones, but so it's not, it's not just the idea of, hey, a request of Derek. It, you know, the, some of these go out and they fan to a lot of people. And I mean, it's, it's, it's emailed, Joe. And then who's acting on it? Then there's, then there's those calls in between. If you add up that time, I bet you, you'd be surprised the amount of time that it spent on some of these things. These are five minute pieces and we look at their, and, and so when we look at, when we look at our budgets and the amount of people, we have to look at it and say, well, how many people are touching this? Okay, in other words, when that email comes up, how many people touch that? And you know which ones I'm talking about. Some of them I bet you have, like I say, ten people touching it. You cannot tell me that's efficient. Ten people touch it, ten people read it. Even if they don't act on it, they had to go through the process of it because then they realize someone else acts on it. There's, there's some real, there's some concerns with that.
David, I'm sorry. How did you get to?
I, I think we're premature having this whole discussion. I like Phil's advice about committees prioritizing that they have multiple requests in the same stress session. They ought to prioritize it. I like that. But until the town administrator comes to this body and says, one person on that, her staff is, their time is being demanded too many ways and I have solutions to that. We need to put the responsibility on the department head to do that. The comeback that his board at some time when one employee is overburdened with demands from multiple entities and at that time she'll offer solutions. And we, we, we shouldn't be trying to manage the workload of one individual. That's the department head's job.
Yeah, it's not one individual. It's multiple individuals.
We've, we've been talking about one individual.
I've, I've mentioned that the engineering staff is, is another one, so.
But that goes back to the depart, and the department head tackled that by putting an assistant on. So I, this whole discussion is premature.
I don't know. I mean, I could also make the argument, would we need an assistant if we didn't?
The workload.
I, I respectfully disagree, but that, that's, that's neither here nor there. Parks and Rec, we'll move on.
Well, we already talked about the pools. They did vote, they did vote. Nick, you will be seeing a fee schedule coming in regarding the programs that they offer. So that will be coming before the board. And probably, and also we did speak a little bit about the resources there regarding especially summer lawn care, et cetera. How as, as we get more and more parks, it's becoming, it's becoming difficult to maintain them. It's, you know, just, when I say maintain, we're just talking regarding just the mowing and the pickup of things. And so certain fields came up and there was discussion of how are we going to do, how are we going to handle the process? Okay, you have the fee schedule now.
So this is something that we would need to put schedule for a hearing.
Yeah, I thought you'd want to see it, review it before you decide to go forward with scheduling it for public hearing. But we could do that, public hearing same time sidewalk policy, advertise it once.
So one of the problems that's coming up within Parks and Rec is that, and just to give you an idea, one field might be three hours to mow it and then all of a sudden you go to the lower field, it's an hour and it's, and that's four hours and it's twice a day and that's just one field. And you start going around to all the different fields. I, I, I think one of the conversations that come up there is that I think we should look at how we handle those, handle those, in other words, and, you know, do we want to go with more part-time people? Do we want to allocate out, out some of those fields to some other entities or other groups to see how they would maintain the work? And those are some of the conversations that came up. Unless you want to go more specific into it.
Well, yeah, I mean, there, the, the specificity here is that it's taking with all these things that are online. Siret Field in particular, that's a big complex. You, then you throw the kindergarten on there. And then you start talking about some of these other things that Parks and Rec is doing. Now they find themselves, they have all these town facilities and then there are some private facilities that they're doing because for a variety of reasons. We have those municipal agreements with Allard Park and then we also have Lions Field. The school district pays rents that, the baseball field for five thousand dollars. But the, but the town has, has mowed both that, that baseball field and the upper part. They've also mowed the, the baseball field at Allard. The commission is, is under the belief that we can't keep doing these types of things. It's too, it's just simply too much time allocation with limited resources. We're spread way too thin. So they made a decision to, they're going to speak with all, all the entities, the Lions Club and then was it Babe Ruth Baseball, right? Because they kind of do.
Well, Babe Ruth, I think has already taken ownership of their mowing the field at the Allard.
Right. So that's kind of, that's kind of where, where the commission is. And, you know, the, I think the plan is to have those stakeholders in at the next commission meeting to explain why they're doing it and to talk about alternatives.
I say maybe we could put a, an article, since they're nonprofits.
Oh, Nick, oh, Nick, come on.
I'm just saying, they do a lot for the town and, I mean, the same argument that we have.
Yeah, I mean.
Just, just, no answer required.
There, and there was, listen, there was those discussions and I'm not disagreeing with you. It's that part of what makes Goffstown, Goffstown is that the community and these community groups do have a lot of, they do give back a lot, you know? Whether it be our churches or schools or, you know, private organizations. Right. And so, but then where do you kind of then draw the line between what the community can pay for and what is more of a private responsibility? And that's where I think the commission, the commission felt, and Steve, correct me if I'm wrong, that with these two groups, they felt that there was a clear distinction that, that they were not used by everyone. They were used by a select group of individuals.
Yeah, because part of these fields was that, you know, if Parks and Rec doesn't utilize them at all. In fact, you know, the public can't go there without, they can't go there and utilize these fields when no one's on them. If this is not way, in other words, they're private fields. But yet they do serve the community because you do have baseball teams and private soccer clubs utilizing them. So the question is, you know, on one end, one can make the argument saying, well, it makes sense. There's enough community people using it, but they're using, you know, in a private factor that we go out and take care of these fields. But the other thing is, there's only so much resource to do it and, and we're looking at such, we shall we say, Barn and Roy where we're spending so much time mowing fields, we're not getting back to doing the maintenance things that should be done at the other parks. So either you have to expand the amount of resources, which maybe is possibly hiring more part-time kids and, and keeping those who are, who's, what's his name? I apologize.
Mike.
Mike, maybe Mike instead. Mike being out there for what he does, mowing lawns. Maybe he, maybe he shows them, hey, here's what we need to have done at these fields and he's out there. In other words, he uses those people part-time. He's out there doing the, the maintenance that from a higher skill sets.
Yes.
This is a point of correction though, and even though the school district is separate from us, but it is tax dollars going. Those fields are also utilized by high school teams.
Correct.
So it's, it's not just those organizations.
Right, and I think, Nick, I think this is why this thing is, there's so many intertwined, there, there are so many intertwined relationships. And, and I have, I have to disclose that I've been a member of the Lions Club for four, four or five years. So I, I'll have to recuse myself from anything that we, that we, we deal here with. But because that's where the high school baseball team plays their games and there is no other ninety-foot baseball diamond that's suitable for varsity baseball and the Lions Club owns the property and it's just, it's a, it's a, it's just an awkward thing. So anyway, the Parks and Rec Commission is going to meet with the stakeholders and we'll see what happens from there. The other issue that came up and that was, that took on a lot of debate is that there is, there was a lot of discussion about resources. You know, about, about trying to improve, you know, the, I, I don't even say improve the facilities, but upkeep these facilities with, with a, with a modest budget and where the resources are going. And then at the latter part of the meeting, there was a lot of discussion about what's Parks and Rec's role. I mean, can they continue or should they continue with, with youth athletics? Are there other private entities that can pick up these, you know, like right now, there is no Little League, so junior baseball takes care of Little League. There is a Screamin' Eagles football team, you know, football league and there's cheerleaders and there's probably a good seventy percent of the youth recreation is done, you know, privately. And then the other balance of it, basketball and a few others are done in-house in the, in the direct department. So that's kind of where the focus came about to saying, okay, should we, should, should, should the direction of Parks and Rec focus more on upkeeping the facilities, making sure that the pools work, the bathrooms work, that you have programs that not, a volunteer group would never do? Like, let's say like canoeing or snow shoeing, that type of thing, organizing those events, senior citizen programs and then let youth athletics kind of run themselves, you know? That's how a lot of municipalities do that. They just, which we've kind of done ourselves. That's what they're, is it, is that about the, summarizing it?
Yeah, I think what you're saying a lot is that there's, you know, obviously there's been a change in the garden, transitioning and, and, and there's been a lot of talk regarding what is, what are the, what are the long scope plans? And, and it's difficult when you get a group together once a month for, for a handful, I mean, for a handful of hours.
Two hours sometimes.
You know, two hours. In fact, at this point, you know, one of the things that came up was we're going to start meeting from six to nine thirty. You know, we finally, you know, we just, it's still going to take much more time. So you're, you're transitioning with, through, through this process and we're talking about, you know, I mean, we've gone to someplace we've never gone before. We're revolving accounts and fees and how does all play in and what, yeah, how does all play in and where we're going forward? But so it's, it's, it's been an interesting time.
That's to say the least. So, is there any, you have the, the program fees in here. The thought process was to have, have a public hearing on them. Any objections to scheduling the public hearing at the same time we schedule all the sidewalk policy? And I won't, I don't get too hung up on the fees because that's part of what the hearing is all about. But the fact that the Rec, Rec Commission is proposing the fees, I think, is the issue.
I guess just maybe for, for information they could have for that is how they would enforce like a tennis court rental.
Enforcement.
In other words, yeah, who, where do you go for it? Who's going to go to the courts to make sure people are using them or?
Okay, and, and part of that.
Parking fees.
Okay, the parking, well, first of all, the parking fee is for the high school students who, to.
Gotcha.
Okay.
During the school year.
And the tennis court rental, I, I, I don't, that's not, I, my understanding is it's not for, let's say if you decide to go and play tennis, it's for those groups to put on a tennis clinic or something of that nature. Okay? And the other thing you won't see here in the fee right now is for the summer program. But what they wanted to do, you know, they have time, you know, they're still in discussion regarding that summer program. And what they're trying to do is, is obviously going through the process of this one to get this out. Honestly, some, you know, once it's, once it's, once it's out there, they can always come back and make changes as, as need be.
Can I get, if you, if you can follow up with, with the director on a question? Are there after-school, I'm told that there's an after-school program that Parks and Rec runs? Is that?
Still talking inside?
Is that different? Is there a fee for that? And is there, I know that that New Morning School runs before and after.
Oh, is it a program that you're talking about?
I don't know. Maybe I'm confusing it, but.
After-school program on Wednesdays.
Okay, is.
Maybe the app, yeah.
And is that only one day a week? Would they do that or?
I think it's more than one day.
Could you find, can you find out about that?
Yeah, I, I'll, I'll check into that.
Because I, that was one question-
And, and part of this wasn't, wasn't to, to fee, to fee everything to death, I mean, not everything is going to have a fee, you know, obviously.
Right, but, but by the same token, there, there are some things, you know, such as the summer playground, and, you know, in my opinion, it was a nice-to-have thing, but when you don't charge anything for it, you know, and you, and someone is watching over your kids for the entire day, the conversation from the commission is, what do you charge? Do you make it so that it helps parents who work, in terms of you, you have a drop-off at, say, eight o'clock in the morning, you have a pickup at four-thirty, as opposed to having it from nine to, to three, that, that type of thing?
Part of the balance also is, is to improve upon things, obviously, these fee, you know, with these fees, it's some, some, you know, obviously, you're, you're going, when you look at the facilities, and you can take the money, go into, you know, they'll put it into revolving account, and it can help them in the future. I don't know if anyone's taken a look inside the Parks and Rec building, we were talking a lot about that the other night. With the meeting room where the kids lay down and they do the yoga and stuff, the rugs torn, I mean, it's, I'm sorry, I'm gonna just say the word, it's disgusting. It, it was just, you know, and, and so hopefully, there is a little bit left in the budget this year, and we're kinda looking at that room too, saying, you know, as we look at, you know, it's just a tin shed, that building to begin with. We're looking at some of the things that we can improve upon without spending a lot of money, and, you know, so we're looking at the rugs, and it's just, when you take a look at it, you'll know, it's a, it's duct taped, it's frayed, it's, 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 it's-
The floors are in rough shape too.
Yeah, the floors are, it's in rough shape.
I got a question on the fee schedule. Is there an assumption that we provide programs to non-residents?
Well, I think part of the, part of the reality is, a lot of these programs-
I think they check.
Most, most, all these programs that are currently out there, and if you've coached the sports, trust me, there are non-residents in these, in these teams. It, it, it happens, it, it's just part of-
Is it because we're doing it in the school, and so some of our schools take tuition students, is that why?
It's part of it.
It's part of it, and sometimes it's fielding the teams, you know, and so part of the, you know, part of this process is that, you know, um, you will see kids come from different neighborhoods, I mean, from different communities, they, they hang out, they play with each other, yeah, it, 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 there should be no shock with this one, it, it, it's out there and it happens, and so, they're looking at it saying-
Well, we, we have non-residents who go to our pools.
Yeah.
So what makes us think that we don't have non-residents?
I always thought our programs were just for residents, that taxpayer dogs are only being used for residents.
I would, I would tell you historically in the past, they have not turned away people, and, and that's the way it's gone. And so now we're saying, hey, by the way, if there aren't gonna be non-residents, there will be that fee for a non-resident.
All right, moving on.
That's a policy decision I think the board's gonna take up. On whether or not we're gonna serve, even provide services to non-residents.
We need a town manager.
There we go.
What's, what's the next line of agenda here, Mr. Chair? Planning Board. I was gonna say something, but I refrain.
You did.
Oh yeah.
Self-control. Planning Board Met Thursday. And uh, Tim White from Southern New Hampshire presented a ten-year highway plan. And uh, new boards, new business, the uh, uh, board uh, voted to accept the completeness review on uh, lot line adjustment uh, on back mountain, uh, Goffstown Back Road by, owned by James Modesto. The board accepted the plan and continued it at the December ninth meeting. And old business, um, there was a time extension request for uh, more time to build approved um, multi-unit building for manufacturing over on, uh, off of Daniel Plummer. Uh, board voted to approve the time extension for a year, um, but also, since it was approximately five years that this, ago that this was approved, uh, they wanted a applicant to pay a site plan review fee at the time the building permit is sought, uh, so that the planner and the town engineer can re, review it and determine that the site plan meets the current regs. Also, the uh, board heard a request for a time extension hearing, um, to build the approved Goffstown Harvest Christian Church on Cody Avenue. And the board voted to accept the time extension application for review, and also voted that there was not a regional impact, but also voted to deny the time extension due to the fact that the variance had expired on the project back in June, so technically there's, um, site plan approval was no longer valid since the variance had lapsed. So the applicant was uh, told to come back once they have their, uh, they're currently back at the ZBA. So once they get the, uh, they do get that, that they could uh, resubmit their site plan for review. And it'll be easier process since uh, it's already been reviewed by the staff, so it should be just a simple review. And uh, some other business, uh, Jack Munn from Southern New Hampshire Planning, uh, is proposing a source water protection plan. And I have a copy of it here that I'll leave, uh, if anybody wants to re, review it. Okay, that's here, and um, Derek and uh, two members of the ZBA came and uh, proposed their amendments for chickens and livestock. And there was quite a bit of discussion as to why no roosters, okay? What's the issue with roosters versus chickens?
Maybe the wake-up call in the morning?
Well, I was, wondered if it was the, uh, was it the old question, which came first, the chicken or the egg? But uh, nobody wanted to go there.
So we're not allowed to have roosters?
Well-
Have to watch the video.
Yeah, because they're gonna be coming back.
Okay.
They took, they, they took the planning board's comments, and uh, they, they'll be back.
So we can have roosters now?
I didn't say you could have roosters. Okay, there was also a extensive discussion on what was the definition of livestock? And why they didn't have the definition in there, and if you go to the state RSA and you look up the definition of livestock, you'll understand why the ZBA members did not wanna have it as part of the zoning amendment.
Quite very.
Ex, ex, exactly, okay? And you'd be surprised as what it leaves out. Uh, the uh, board also approved a sign permit for uh, Pegiglio's Pizza at Twenty Main Street.
What?
Pegiglio's Pizza.
No, come on, get it right. Poor guy. What is it? It can't be that. Come on. How about, no, that's not right, is it? Pegiglio's? Is it really? I don't think it is.
We'll have five emails in the morning.
I don't think, you, you cut the guy's name wrong, I think.
Yeah, I didn't spell it. And they also, uh-
I think it's Pegiglio's, isn't it? It's Patiglio's. Tom Patiglio, is that his name?
There's no T in the name.
No? Maybe you're right. He's getting, and the name of his place is what? Pegiglio's, you're saying? It's the pizza place next to Town Hall?
Twenty Main Street.
Twenty Main Street.
Right, it's not next, it's across the parking lot.
Across the parking lot.
Okay, the board also voted to reduce the pond, uh, for the Elva Drive subdivision. And that was a condition that they put on that was to uh, release the funds. The road had to be finished and accepted by the selectmen by September first, twenty, two thousand, uh, twenty eleven. When the town would take action, uh, call the bond as the town administrator mentioned earlier.
All right. Last but not least, um, the board conducted a site walk on Saturday morning, and that was um, with regard to a conditional planning board approval on a development off of Montalona Road. And I don't know, does anybody wanna, wanna, wanna speak to it, or do you want me to recap it, or?
I'd like to hear Phil's version.
Yeah, I'd like to hear your version.
I'd like to hear my version?
Yeah.
We met there, we took a walk through the-
The woods.
Uh, well, no, we went along the, uh, the right side of the property, up by the line. We actually trespassed a little bit onto the butters property when we got up by the, uh, by the dam. Uh, we followed the property all around the perimeter property, actually, David Pierce did a good job of uh-
Count the clock wise.
That's right, that's right, the right side went around the back and came back, exactly, we came back to the point of beginning.
So, the, the question that we had before us, um, you know, prior to going on the site walk, was that uh, the planning board gave conditional approval upon the board of select, selectmen, I guess, accepting the open space. And-
Or.
What?
Or.
Or. Or there'll be a homeowners association. So, I, I think what we, you know, need to try to come to grips with, you know, relatively soon in fairness to the developer, who, by the way, Keith Mortell, I think was named, he was a very nice gentleman, uh-
Butler.
Very, yeah, class act, no doubt about it, um, took us, took us around, and uh, good guy. My opinion was, the, the property was very nice, I mean, the, the, uh, the back portion, I should say, was very, very nice, and it had a, you know, a nice portion that was abutting, the uh, black brook. But the question before us, I think, is, you know, what are the pros and cons of the town owning it versus a homeowners association? And maybe we can get some information from Scott Bartlett on a couple of these questions, but assumably, if, if the, if the homeowners association uh, had ownership of it, what would be the taxes that we would forego for that property? Because it's in current use, I'm assuming. What taxes would be lost if we took ownership of it?
Yeah, we check, okay.
If we took ownership of it? What are, are there any liabilities that the town has if we were to take ownership of it versus it being with the, with the, uh, association? That's another question. Um, and then, feel free to chime in on some of these other questions. My other one was, are there any other entities, other than the town of Goffstown, that could take ownership of it other than a homeowners association, like a conservancy group, et cetera?
I think the other question, was there, were there any parcels, was this, was this parcel land going to be connected with any other?
Yeah, or was this parcel of land gonna be connected to any other potential land conservation or easement? Because the, the gentleman who walked us around stated that that might be the case, that there might be some other abutters that might be looking to do a donation or easements, and there'll be a bigger connectivity of this thing. Uh, there's a wetland, a pretty large wetland on the right-hand side of that property, right?
Beaver Pond, yeah.
Yeah, Beaver Pond there.
That connects-
But no, that pond's on-
It must be on that.
And joining the property.
So, uh-
I think it was Lambert's property.
Yeah, Lambert, I think, was what he said. Then the other thing that, I, I guess I'm curious, is I live in a cluster development myself, and I don't know how many acres that are associational, I, I think it's like thirty to forty acres, but right now, um, I know that there are people who regularly hike the trails and walk the property, nothing is posted, um, but yet, you know, the town doesn't have any ownership interested in. So, you know, what would be the, I guess, what would be the key difference between, I guess, that arrangement? I mean, could the homeowners association post the land no trespassing, could they not? Um, would they want to?
Doesn't the planning board have the authority to set a condition for it to stay?
Right, open space, open to the public.
And I think that's the, I think, I don't think that the homeowners associations can post them that way.
The, yeah, I think, you know, the issue that I saw was that, and jump in for the, for the folks who walked the property, is that as, as, as David Neiman stated a couple of weeks ago, this is not really a parcel where you could put, you know, ball fields, or you know, probably, you know, are there some uplands? Yeah, but to get there would be a, a feet and a half. So this is not really a, a, a piece of land that's su, is suitable for, you know, say, future development for town building, or even recreational fields. This is a nature preserve, basically, with hiking, with the potential of, of some hiking trails. Is that fair to say, do you, do you think?
Yeah, it, for me, it was very, it, it, it was very similar to going to Pulpit Rock in Bedford, where they have that parking space, and you walk through it, 'cause you have the Beaver Pond, you have Black Brook, it's, you know, it's, it's, it's generally nice hiking, and, and it's a pretty parcel of land.
It's a hundred acres, I mean, it's not like it's-
And that's what it reminded me, I was, I don't know if anyone's ever hiked at Pulpit Rock, but that's what it reminded me of.
But I just, I just wanted to make a clear distinction, that this is not something that, um, this is not like the, the Barnard property, where this has, you know, sand and gravel, and future municipal use, and ball field. This has, this is the exact opposite of that. This is, there is a lot of streams that go through it, crisscross through it, there's wetlands, there is, um, you know, uh, there's-
Are there natural paths, no?
Yeah, there are, I wouldn't say, not natural per se, but there are man-made paths that, um, that are probably, what, probably about fifty percent of it is, is a man-made path, and then we were obviously trekking through the woods and for some of the others, but, um, there are some paths, um-
Yeah, they might be old logging.
Yeah, old, like, yeah, the logging roads.
Do, do we want feedback on the uh, maintenance responsibility regarding the two detention ponds?
Yeah.
Public Works to answer that.
And is that, Mr. Mortell said that that was not linked, you know, there was never a condition between the maintenance of these things and the, and, and, and the town being, uh, given the property. But I guess what are our maintenance responsibilities with these?
The detention ponds would, would be on, on the opens, would be within the open space. Whoever the, owns the open space, therefore owns the two detention ponds. And the detention ponds hold all the water from the storm drains of the street.
And also from several of the properties that drain into the, was they sheet differently, uniquely?
So if, if the town took ownership-
The natural drainage going under the proposed road stays natural drainage.
No, that's not what I'm talking about. The way they, Carl would have to explain it to you.
There are some properties that water runoff would be into the street area, or into the detention ponds.
Is it possible, you know, I mean, obviously, that's the way the land's being shown, 'cause, I mean, a, a hundred and thirty-two acres, is it possible to separate and have the retention ponds remain with, 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 with the, uh-
Homeowners Association.
And, and then, at the other piece parcel land go, go, you know, go towards the conservation?
Again, and again, I'll-
I'm just throwing, I don't know if that's our option.
What the developer stated was that, and again, I, I, this is where I think I need a little, we need a little help from, you know, DPW and, and our engineering, was that those detention ponds were part of the road infrastructure and the road drainage. So they are, they are part of that structure, they're not a separate entity, although they are not connected closely, 'cause they are somewhat far away from each other, they function as one. So that the, the sheet flow that comes off the road will eventually go into these detention ponds, and they, you know, they, so, one has to have the other, based upon the design.
The size of the detention ponds is, and, that they're engineered such that the total flow is absorbed into the s, ground.
So they have to hold back more water, right? That was the whole notion, if they hold back a lot more water than, than say, the current-
Your post-construction flow off the land could increase more than your pre-construction.
Right, but, but as Keith, as the developer explained it, he goes, they, they hold back a lot of the water so that it, over time, it percolates through, and-
You have impervious surface.
Right.
So these old logging roads, if we accept the land, do they become classics roads?
No, 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 these are more like trails, so these are not, um, they're not that, they're like an ATV.
Logging roads are more like the skidder one.
Right.
Yeah, that's, yeah.
Well, like shanty road.
That would be, no, the shanty road would probably be better.
Yeah, shanty road probably would be-
I'm just curious in terms of, you know, when an ATV goes out and is not allowed use, who's gonna enforce?
Right, that's another point.
Well, yeah, that, no, ATVs could, could go on this trail. And what Keith said, as we walked the trail, and we got to the end of his property-
He said, who's wearing red?
He didn't know where that road, where that, where-
That road went to.
That road went to. So that road could very well go to an, a public road, I, you know, we don't know. So that possibility, could, could you get in there with an ATV, or?
Easily.
Sure, easily.
And I guess-
You're in a stump jumper.
The question to be answered would be, I mean, this site plan is an open space development, so that open space is part of the site plan. The ownership is the question, so what would be the overriding reason that we would take this property off the tax rolls and own it by the town? There have, there has to be some compelling reason to do that.
The only reason I, the only reason I would see it is for is that if we're saying we want a place where you, where people would go out and hike, I mean, that's-
But you could still do that, can't you?
No, 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 well, it, it, well, the question being there that if it, if it, if it stays with the homeowners association, you might not have that opportunity. And so, it, that's where the, the value is like, is placed.
Could we also see what the difference would be between its current use, tax liability, and if they posted it and lost their current use status? What that increase in tax revenue would be? 'Cause there would be a greater liability if it was taken out of current use.
Difference in taxes?
Well, I think this is a, I mean, this is a lot of, the, the property is a nice property, there's just so many different issues that are involved in terms of our, you know, what liability do we have, and, you know, um, I mean, it's that big of a property- you know, what liability do we have? And, you know, I mean, it's that big of a property where folks may hunt on it in the, in the fall or so. I mean, I don't know, didn't you think it was that big to, that it's a possibility?
Sure.
There was a hunter there when we were there.
Yeah, you're right. There was a hunter there. You're right. So...
And have we taken ownership of any open space in an open space subdivision? I don't know of any. Have...
Not that I'm aware of. Not that I'm aware of.
There was...
I guess, if we haven't done it before, can you?
I think you can. I mean, it was, there was, there was some, if you remember, when the kindergarten was initially proposed off of Tibbetts Hill Road, Pasture Drive, that development, part of that process was that there was going to be, giving the land for the kindergarten as the open space. I think it does allow it.
Because it says that that land shall be undeveloped in perpetuity.
For open space, yeah.
That open space land is undevelopable. So, I'm not sure how, if that was an open space subdivision, how they could have even considered it for the kindergarten.
I don't know. Maybe, maybe there's other factors involved. I'm not sure.
I'm just reading this off of the NewHampshireSpace.org, which is an open space. There's no requirement for current use land to be open to the public. So, they can keep it in current use and restrict its use.
Yeah, but is it part of an open space development that can still be done?
No, this is just referring to current use.
Right, but not open space development.
That's could be different.
Those conditions are set by the planning board.
Right.
Well, I think, I think in fairness to, you know, Mr. Martel, if we can try to, I think he wanted us, I think his preference is to have a decision, you know, from us either way. I don't, right, he didn't...
He's just, he's looking for closure.
He's looking for action, you know, basically.
Yeah. He thought it'd be a win-win situation though, if it went...
To the town.
To the town. But either way, he's looking for closure.
My other thought process was, I mean, obviously, Dave, something that David Neiman is, you know, he brought it forward to the board. I think he has an interest in it. Is it, should we have, you know, him and someone from planning board or something like that, need be, or open space, you know, articulate some of the pros to it as well? And so, really, that's what we're doing, trying to develop a pros and cons list to it. You know, one of the things that I keep thinking is, I was, I did really like the property, but then I think about my own, my own open space subdivision, and that is, people are snowshoeing on it. They're doing it all the time.
Just people in your HOA or?
No, no, every, just different people. People park their car and they, you know...
But there is a little bit of it, you know, I'm not saying we should or not. I'm just saying, but there's a different vision to this piece of property that you would turn in to where the road for, for where the homeowners are.
It might be more formal.
And it'll be a more, a formal parking place that here's, you know, here's the place to park, such as where Pulpit Rock is, where, let's say, we have UnConnoitic, where you just kind of park along.
That's the difference.
You know, it's going to be more of a destination place where parking.
It's a lot bigger. I mean, I think my, my, my association land, I think it's in the neighborhood of thirty acres. It's a, what is, I don't even know what that, what's it called?
So, if you check ownership, who would oversee this?
Well, the, the, I believe that David said that it would be the PWA, right? Would be the, what do you call it, steward of the land.
What does that mean, the steward?
That's what he said.
Okay, so if PD gets a phone call that there's a bunch of kids out there, they got a bonfire out there, and...
We call up the PWA, and they bring the TSA, they do a body scan, and we're all set.
They keep oversight of the land that remains under the open space. It's not being wrongly developed.
I guess your question, though, what would they do if it was on the trail for UnConnoitic?
Yeah. Same thing.
What would they do?
Yeah, but I think what Phil's point is, is that it's a stretched resource. I mean, it's, you know...
No, and, well, then that's a, I mean, then say, hey, that's another...
You know, we joke around about this, but this town does not have the ATV.
No, the point I'm making is, we had the problem, part of the reason that, with the rail trail, why I supported a rail trail, was when there were ATVs going out there on people's property, they would call up PD. And PD couldn't do anything about it because the owner of the property has to make the complaint. That's why I'm asking the question. You got a hundred acres out there. Who's tech, who's the steward? What is involved in the stewardship? So, when the phone call comes in that there's an issue out there, who's the person that PD, I mean, who's the person that has to call PD to say to go take care of the situation out there?
Yeah, which would be asked, yeah. I don't think they're the, I don't think they're the enforcement arm. I think that they're just the protector, you know, making sure that it doesn't get...
But what does that mean?
I don't know. I don't know. I'll have to find that out.
What authority, they detect something inappropriate?
When the trees all fall down from the windstorm like they had over off of Shirley Hill Road...
Which they did down that property.
And somebody has to go in there and take it. Who's the person who take, who does that?
The owner, with notification to...
What is the stewardship?
With notification to the conservator.
Good questions. All right. Let's get some answers to those.
Because that was an issue went around and around with the planning board.
Yeah. All right. Any other business? You, I already allowed you a business under the perambulation or something?
New business.
New business.
Yes. In fulfilling this board's responsibility to perambulate the town boundaries, I'm pleased to announce that tomorrow I will perambulate the boundary with Bedford. And accompanying me will be our assessor, and from Bedford will be their fire chief and director of public works. And there are seven sites we're looking at. And in conclusion, one of those sites was put in today. And I, my appreciation to the public works at City of Manchester and their survey crew, that who put that concrete bound in to, within a hundredth of an inch foot, is where it's supposed to be. And I was there for a whole hour, watching the road, watching the road to be opened and the bound to be put in place and surveyed and concreted and...
So, now when you put the asphalt back over, you won't be able to find it?
That's a steel, it's a steel cover with a little door.
I've been to Phil's, I see, he has about five or six on his, you know, like that. He must be collecting them.
Does he sell, he sells the steel, manhole covers?
Is that Manchester?
After, with tomorrow, I will have completed five of our six adjoining towns.
Excellent.
When you do complete the sixth town, the board will be giving you a granite marker paperweight.
Perambulator of the year.
Perambulator of the year.
I know where to get one.
I'll chip one off a bound, okay?
And we hope you're here in seven years to do it again.
Yeah. I have, I have to say, and apologize for not giving it in my report earlier, but David reminded me of it. I attended municipal association where David was the speaker on perambulation. I'll have to say that it was almost standing room only.
Really?
Okay, it was a well-attended, well-attended. And I'm sure he got quite a few inquiries and questions.
Yep, Chief Oegan told me he was going in too, in preparation for his meeting tomorrow.
Yep. So, David, I just say that David did a, did a very good job over there.
And he is representing Goffstown in the New Hampshire Dancing with the Stars in two weeks. So, congratulations on that as well.
But one thing, one thing... One thing I just wanted the board to be aware of, that, a couple of things that came out in there, that there are differences between the historic markers and markers like this one that David just talked about, that's a replacement, even though it's a replacement. And everybody says, okay, you know, the two towns, the select board or whoever's in charge of the, on the two, all the towns that are involved, they say that that's where it is. You have many, many deeds, and you have other things that are recorded that go off the original one. And when you do not have the original one there, things change.
And, and that's why the bounds are replaced by a licensed surveyor, because then he's required to check all the adjoining bounds, all the adjoining properties that make reference to it.
All right. In terms of, I don't know, new business or old business, I'd like to put on the agenda for next week legislative issues that we may have as a community. So, Sue, if you could solicit our department heads to see, are there any legislative issues that require us to get our state reps involved in for legislation? The one that pops up is the one, is that whole doggy license thing? Is that something that, well, Hiko keeps mentioning it, is the fee commensurate with, you know, the amount that's, does that fee need to be increased? Are there anything that we need to address legislatively that New Hampshire Municipal Association is not already on the radar screen with? And there's a lot. I mean, if you look through the last, I think it was, Town and City Magazine, there must be like thirty or forty things that they're, that they're working on. But is there anything that you think may be, you know, specific to Goffstown or that you might want to see? And we just talked about that tonight, you know, is there a need to have more teeth in this ordinance? You know, the statute that we just talked about, I forgot which one that was, the thirty-one, thirty-nine C.
On manufactured housing also.
Right. Well, yeah, we talked about that because in terms of elderly deferrals of taxation, right?
Or the abandonment.
The abandonment. But see, these are the types of things that I think we have to, what? What's my? So, these are some of the issues that we're faced with. And should there be some sort of a modification on that deferral whereby on a manufactured home, maybe it doesn't go up to, was it eighty percent of market value?
Yeah.
Because there is no land. See, under, under the normal circumstances, if the house falls into disrepair and the house, you know, and there's no value in the home, whether it be, you have value in the land. That's inherent value. But in the manufactured home case, the people, they don't own the land.
Yeah, but the problem is, if you take the property, you have the liability of paying, paying for the lease on it.
Right.
No, right, I understand that. That's the complexity with the manufactured home piece, which does not exist on a traditional home. So, that's something that maybe legislation could assist with.
LGC did call me on that because they heard that we were dealing with it, and they were dealing with it well. I said, well, thank you, but I don't know where you got your information, but it is an issue.
That we were dealing with it well?
Yeah.
But I'm saying that might be one where we need, you know, assistance from one of our state reps. So, I believe that they have a certain window which they, in which they can...
Introduce new legislation.
Introduce legislation, yeah?
I know where you're going.
Oh, no. Is this the trolley?
What a great segue about land that's been abandoned and owned by the town. That's, that's, but you can keep going.
After construction season.
After construction season. So, when does exactly, after construction season, just for my own...
It all depends on the weather.
Yeah.
Whether or not...
When the pavement plans...
It's still in construction season now, Steve.
Okay, and what are we constructing?
Roundabout.
Roundabout. Well, that's not a we, that's a DeLorean. What are we doing?
But our people are overseeing it now, so...
What are our work crews? What, I mean, what are we?
I think that's a question that needs to go to...
David Pierce, the DPW.
Public Works.
Yeah.
Status of the road plan.
Could you, could you get, can you get back to Steve on that?
I'm looking for three structures, two up at Mountain Base and one on Surratt Road.
Surratt Road, we don't own. We can't do Surratt Road.
I thought we took that.
No, we didn't. No, not yet.
Not yet?
Not yet. We could.
It's the two at Mountain Base.
Yeah, the trolley and then a floor sitting.
The question is, if you were to tear it down, what materials are in this thing? If there is any hazard?
They have to do asbestos testing.
Need Kyle to put the plan before the board or indicate what he's doing.
That's a perfect winter project, though.
Yeah.
You can do that in the winter.
And if there is any kind of a well or septic, it needs to be closed.
Underground tanks.
Right.
But either way, the town...
Whatever it is.
Oil.
Please make that note to Carl.
But let, but let me ask the next question because we talked...
Time's up, I'm sorry.
No, because we talked about those properties as far as that's us taking the structure off and still retaining land. We don't, my understanding is, we don't want to retain the land there. Is that correct?
Oh, that's been the master plan to retain the land.
These are unconnected spots. I mean...
Doesn't matter.
But they connect fast.
They're all, all the dots fill in.
So, help me a little bit here. Where, you know where I'm going to go?
No, I have no idea where you're going. That's the beauty of it.
So, we own these, these lots, and one that we're contemplating on, with one house is in a hole, two of them are just dilapidated and, and we talk about liability all the time. When you see the trolley in the white one, you want to talk about liability, go to those two places, especially the one that's in the hole. And we're going to now, either not, or either we're going to or not remove the buildings from it. And then the intention is to hang on to this land for how long?
What land? The one in the mountain?
On the mountain.
Part of the, the master plan was to hold on to it forever, yes.
Okay. And so, what happens to the one on Surratt Road? Is that part of that plan, where if we were to take that? So, what would we do with that parcel?
You'd sell it.
If we even take it.
If you take it, I would think you'd destroy the building and then sell the parcel.
First of all, you go through the process, we go through the process of the, of the form that goes through all of departments and committees, and then we evaluate it from there.
Yeah, we haven't done that on Surratt Road.
So, it's safe to say then that if we're holding the two parcels up on Mountain Road, that we have to do something with the structures then?
Yeah. Right. And we should start the process on Surratt Road. There's no reason to hold back on that. Right? Why, but would there be any reason not to start that process in terms of evaluation?
Yeah, we can start.
I, I'm just saying, if, if all of them...
Not to take it is hazardous conditions.
I know, but, okay, if either we're going to take it or not, it's a yes or no question. And...
Well, that's the board's decision. And I think you need to have a cost estimate on what it would cost to clean up. And would, would it be a buildable lot? It's not going to be grandfathered anymore because it's been down for more than two years.
But these are, these are, these are, I mean, we don't have this problem like Detroit does, for crying out loud. But there, there comes a time when a municipality has to take care of these dilapidated structures because it, then all of a sudden, three become four, four becomes eight, eight becomes sixteen.
And a butter has expressed an interest in the land. And, but he wouldn't be able to clean it up right away. He'd have to wait, and you'd have to give him time to clean it up.
In terms of buying the land?
No, not in terms of buying, in terms of cleaning it up.
No, no, I'm talking in terms of buying it.
If he bought it, he would want some time to clean it up.
Time to clean it up. Well, we could clean it up and have that as a minimum bid, that and the outstanding taxes.
That's some of the processes in, like, that's where I'm, that...
So, you kill two birds at once, don't you? You get rid of the structure, somebody else gets more land, and it's a wash. But we're better off than we are today where it's a dilapidated structure, which looks like heck.
Because you're not receiving any tax revenue on that property anyway.
No.
Right. Which now you would get tax revenue.
Person has walked away because they thought they were foreclosed upon, but they weren't officially foreclosed upon.
But going forward, as a possible strategy would be to remove it, and then to purchase it would be at a minimum with the cost of the piece. And because right now...
That and outstanding taxes.
Because what does it do with now? We don't, we receive no revenue, and it's an eyesore, and it just doesn't make sense that we sit on these that this long.
Yeah, I think...
We could do that. Let me, do you, do you want an estimate on the cost? Because you're going to have to budget for that.
Yes, yes. But then we can also budget a revenue because if we're going to sell this thing off, they should be a push.
Yep.
Or, if not better, so...
When we say cost for removal, I take it that DPW would be the one doing the removal of the structure into, into a thirty-yard dumpster? I mean, that's pretty much what they do in structural, that. That's what they do. I mean, that's...
But do they have that?
No, I, I think they'd hire that one out. I don't think they'd touch that one.
How big is this house?
It's a camp.
It's a camp. You'd knock it down with an excavator?
It's already down.
It's kind of imploded.
No, but what they do is they go in with an excavator with a thumb, and they crush, they put it in the dumpster. I had one removed at my house last, last year. It's not a, this is not a major project.
DPW can't do it. They, they would have to hire somebody.
You're kidding. We can't do that?
They can build a rail trail sixty foot.
You're telling me they can't take, that they can't take an excavator, take the piece, they crush it, and they put it in the thirty-yard dumpster?
Yeah, I can't be. I'm serious.
I'm serious. I mean, I have general contractors come to my house, and they rent a tractor, and they took a bigger cabin down.
It's very steep there, isn't it? I haven't been down there.
You can't move dirt around. If you can move dirt around, and if you have that, that...
The shovel may not be able to reach enough. They'd have to bulldoze the land.
You're on a private road.
Private, yeah.
I'm sorry.
Well, why don't we leave that up to public?
Yeah, here we all trying to be public works directors.
They can tell us what they can and can't do.
Okay. Next, we are done. We have non-public, which is...
Oh, she's going to non-public.
Do I have a second?
E.
E.
Under E.
Yes, seconded.
Is there, all in favor? I'm sorry.
Aye.
Aye.
Yes.
Roll call.
Yes. Yes.
Yes, yes.